Welcome, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for North Idaho College and it's called to order at 6:01 on the 21st of December of 2022. And a quorum is present. I'd like to welcome everyone to this hopefully brief executive session pre-meeting. So we are starting about 30 minutes late. We do have some people signed up for public comment and...
Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's say convene... Please stand with me and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to the just so. I'm going to start off the meeting as motioning. So I motion that the board pursuant to Idaho Code 74206 convene an executive session to consider records that are exempt from public disclosure, that's D, communicate with legal counsel regarding pending and imminent likely litigation, that's F. And I call for a second to my motion.
A second?
Thank you. Discussion or should we go on the move? The motion has been moved and seconded and I'll repeat the motion just so everyone's clear. That the Board pursuant to Idaho Code 74206 convene an executive session to consider records that are exempt from public disclosure and communicate with legal counsel regarding pending and imminent likely litigation. So the floor is open for discussion.
Can you offer some more clarity on those measures, please?
Trying to see what communication that we've...
Could you elaborate on D and then elaborate on F, please?
So D would be looking at documents that are privileged in communication and F that would be like if we were to serve papers or anything like that.
Yes, I know, but like could you be a little more clear on what kind of records are you talking about? Narrow it down a little bit.
Related to lawsuits? And F would be hearing from our lawyer and communication with legal counsel. So. Hearing no further discussion, that's all for the vote, so forgive me, I'll check this. And D. Trustee Banducci, you seconded?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Alright, so this is the talk about the lawsuits that we're experiencing. Roll call, so Banducci?
Aye.
Trustee Corkle?
Mr. Chairman, I'm afraid I'm just forced to vote no on this.
Okay. I'll vote aye. And trustee Zimmerman?
I vote no, I don't have enough information, so no.
Okay. And trustee Wagner to close the books out, I think you say aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay. And so the motion fails, we do not go into executive session, so we shall continue with other business topics. I'm going to hear from our IT to make sure that we're good for the open session because we were on multiple Zoom sessions, if everyone bear with me for a second. Where is our IT? If I at least could get a thumbs up. We're good? Excellent, appreciate that. So, moving on to the next agenda item. Trustee Wagner, would you like to say anything to the community regarding academic freedom? You are the next agenda topic.
Yes, I would. I think it's very important for us to have academic freedom where everybody gets to openly and from a secure standpoint, talk about what they believe in and how they want to run their lives.
Thank you. Alright, moving to public comment. I see we have an A and a D sheet, so I'm assuming there's only two sheets properly there. The first, the first on the list is Alex Elliott. If you'd please come to the microphone, it's in the center of the room. And for everyone near the microphone, if you do not want to be on television, then encourage you to move away from the microphone. Go ahead.
On Thursday, December 8th, the North Idaho College Board of Trustees passed a vote to place President Nick Swain on immediate administrative leave. I remember, I was in conversation with my friend about the future of NIC and various board actions and concerns, and I looked down at my phone to read, "NIC Swain placed on administrative leave." Immediately, my heart sank. This far surpassed any other concern I have ever had about North Idaho College. Without Swain, I am very worried about the future of NIC. I deeply care about and love North Idaho College. Since the fall of 2021, I have attended almost every Board of Trustees meeting. Additionally, I had a conversation with each of the five presidential candidate finalists before their interview with the Board of Trustees. After speaking with every candidate and listening to their public forum, I was able to make an informed decision. Doctor Nick Swain was my first choice. His student-oriented approach, personable nature, paired with his extensive experience and accomplishments, assured me that he would be able to effectively serve the college during this rough time. He has gone above and beyond and demonstrated expertise, kindness, and wisdom during his time in leadership at the institution. When I learned that he was placed on administrative leave, I was devastated. He is the strong, wise leader that NIC needs. I am deeply disturbed by the behavior of trustees Todd Banducci, Greg McKenzie, and Mike Wagner. Name-calling, yelling, whispering in the corner, and passing notes is conduct unbefitting of an elected official and does not show the students that you are a safe individual to be around, talk to, or that you will make decisions that are best for the students. We want trustees that we can trust, not trustees whose actions cause us to have to fight to make our voices heard during finals week.
I would like to say, if you have a sign, please put it under your seat or against the wall and keep it there. If you do not do so, we will ask security to remove the sign. And additionally, this is a business meeting. If we could efficiently get through the many numerous public comments, that would be appreciative of everyone's time and the many people who are watching of our community. So please, reserve your praise and booing, however your views on any topics, to the end of the meeting. So, let's move to the next. Julie Hoffmeyer, please. And Bill Green, you're on deck.
I would like to begin by telling you where I'm from. I am an alumni of NIC and a 32-year proud public school employee. I am grateful to say these halls afforded me a path forward in life. I'm also the daughter of an NJC alumni, transfer U of I graduate, civil engineering. The parent of an NIC alumni, transfer U of I graduate, civil engineering. I am the granddaughter of a career Idaho public school educator who volunteered here in her retirement. I am the great niece of the Molstedts, who left their life's work in the form of a gift to this college, a gift which built the beautiful Molsted Library across the street from us and whose gift continues to serve the students of this college. This is where I'm from and for whom I come to speak today. I am proud to be from this community, proud to be from the likes of Mr. Tubb who gave this community Tubbs Hill, and the Molstedts who gave this college their gift. The title trustee has as its root word, trust. This community has entrusted you to protect this treasure, to ensure its continued accreditation. For the Thompsons, Hoffmeyers, Kings, Carlsons, Johnsons, Leonards, Molstedts, and for all of the students I've taught and will teach, I am here to say, shame on you. Shame on you for coming to take from this community for your personal financial gain. Shame on you for my ancestors who believed the best thing that one can do for themselves, for their community, for the world, is to better themselves through a broad education. For them, I repeat, shame on you.
Bill Green, please. We just move to the next one. Doug Miller, Bill Green, you're still invited on deck if you're making way to...
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Doug Miller. I was born and raised in Coeur d'Alene and graduated from this college in 1971. Been attending athletic events at this school since 1961 when Roy Williams took over as a head basketball coach, presently on the NIC Booster Club Board. And we have been looking to participate in the bringing the college back into the NJCAA and the Seneca West Athletic Conference. And in the past few weeks, the past month, I've been talking with the regional directors of the NJCAA as well as the presidents of the Seneca West Athletic Conference in what it would take and the positioning of bringing the other sports back into the SWAC. Because wrestling is a current member of the SWAC, the only thing that would be required is that we would need to contact the SWAC and just add the additional sports that would want to come back in. I'd like to read a statement that was put on the website of the Pacific Northwest Christian College website, who's a new college member of the SWAC down in Kennewick, Washington. And this was, this is what's posted on their website. Pacific Northwestern Christian College will be partnering with the National Junior College Athletic Association, the NJCAA, as a part of Region 18 for the 2022-2023 academic year. The NJCAA is the national governing body of two-year collegiate athletics and continues to be the leader in championship academic and athletic opportunities for student athletes. The organization is the second-largest national intercollegiate athletic organization in the United States, second only to the NCAA, with over 500 member schools in 44 states each year.
Mr. Miller? We appreciate your public comment, but we are trying to hold it firm to two minutes. Thank you for coming. Bill Green? Tom Torgensen? Torgerson?
Oh, are you next? Yeah, I think I am. Am I next?
Was that Les Wigan?
No, that's Bill Green.
Bill Green, yes, please, welcome.
I'm next, okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you guys for your service. I know you get paid a lot for your job, but thanks a lot for all the effort you put into it. I know it takes a lot of hours, a lot of commitment, a lot of thinking, a lot of discussing, a lot of searching your heart for what's best for North Idaho College. When I have attended the last few board meetings, something's went through my mind and it kind of coalesced and I thought I would ask a kind of rhetorical question and then answer it myself. If I were to ask each one of you, how important is it in your own mind and heart that North Idaho College become to be the best, absolute best, community college there is in Idaho or even in the whole country? That the students who come here cherish their opportunity, chase their dreams, are supported by great teachers, are supported by an organization and administration and a board that supports their fondest aspirations? Whether it's to go to a four-year college and become a professional in some academic field, or whether it's to be a great diesel mechanic, or woodworker, or plumber, or electrician, all those opportunities are here. There's an amazing balance and combination of opportunities both academically and in terms of trades that live right here. So I would bet if I asked you that question, you'd say, if I asked you that on a scale of one to 10, how important are those things to you? You'd probably all say probably at least 11 and a half. So I, my impression is that there are no enemies here. You're all allies. We're all allies, we're all looking for the same thing. And I would just ask that you, I don't know if it's a challenge or what it is, but to say, look in your hearts and say, in each trustee that's here by your side, what do I see in them that's a positive quality? How are they contributing? How can I help them contribute? How can I be part of a team that's going to really work to help our decisions be reflected in great events and great experiences for the students who come here? Let me, thanks very much, I see my time.
Is it on? Tom Torgerson. I was born and raised at 1018 Front. I grew up and did everything downtown Coeur d'Alene. I actually, I don't know Todd, but I went to school here as a student senator with his little brother, Tom. And I love that guy. And he's a great guy. And I think the biggest thought process that goes on is several things. I was a CPA with Deloitte and Touche and these trustees have cost us a million dollars with Rich McLennan's firing. There were other personal settlements that I'm not going to go into that cost us. We lost a $380,000 a year insurance ICRA policy that now costs us a million dollars a year more that we're all paying for, every person in this room. And I think my question is, and I think you owe us all, what is the end goal?
Please respect this person's time.
You can't shut me off, Greg.
No, no, I was trying to make it quiet.
Okay. But yeah, what is the end goal? You owe that to the public. I don't care what it is, I just want to know what it is, because nobody has ever answered that question. Not a single person of the trustees has said, what is the end goal? It, tell us. Maybe it's good, maybe it's bad, but none of us know. And somebody that's lived here since 1966, I feel like I deserve that. I pay for this school. I went to this school. I was a senator at this school. I deserve to know that, and so do all these people.
Kaylee Heel? Neal?
Still never fucking answered.
You're on deck, so Ron Hartman?
Hello, my name is Kaylee Neal. I go to school at Discovery of Learning. I was wondering if you were aware that Swain and Christie Woods were working together to take away college accreditation. I was wondering to know how you plan to, for the future of the college, to help it and help it grow. Because this is about the children, the children of the future, and I believe that children deserve to be in a world that's a better place and is not filled up with people who gawk at people's speeches.
Mr. Ron Hartman? And Brian Segwin on deck?
Hello, my name is Ron Hartman. I'm going to languish my two minutes to Doug so he can continue to talk about the conference that we want to return to. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. The, just wanted to finish up in saying...
Mr. Miller?
Yes?
As much as I want to say yes, I don't think that's how it works.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I'm a big supporter of you, sir. Mr. Hartman, you still have a minute 20 if you want to weigh in, but. Brian Segwin and Randy Neal, welcome.
Alright, I'm going to talk quickly because I have a lot to get through here. My name is Brian Segwin, also known as Library Brian. While speaking to agenda items concerning President Swain's contract, note that I'm a faculty member of NIC but not speaking as a representative of the college or constituency body, I speak for myself. In addition to being a librarian, I would also note that I have two children in the Coeur d'Alene School District. I'm a hometown boy from Priest Lake, Idaho, a graduate of NIC, a taxpayer and homeowner in Bonner and Cooten Counties, trustee zone four, a Democratic Legislative District Chair, a former resident of California, returned to Idaho for family and quality of life, a former chair of the college's Diversity Council, and contributed funds to save NIC. I feel compelled to share the above because experience has proven that whatever I omit about myself will most assuredly be weaponized by David Riley, Aaron Barnard, Matt Edwards, Summer Bushnell, in an effort to misrepresent or cast my sentiments in a conspiratorial light. Disclaimer, I have endured two leadership changes midsemester, whether it's significant turnover and when asked to have stepped up to do more, I have. Employees are the load-bearing component of the institution, dutifully navigating uncertain grounds, but the stress for me is becoming intolerable, which I imagine to some degree is the point. I feel completely let down by the larger community who seem to be indifferent, apathetic, or unconcerned with our edging closer to a loss of accreditation. Faculty and staff have endured accusations from community leaders and trustees ranging from the misallocation of funds in support of Black Lives Matter to indoctrination in the classroom. These accusations have resulted in uncomfortable confrontation in public spaces from those blindly accepting these false narratives. I am personally weighing the value of continuing with an institution and community at the elected level outwardly that outwardly despises me. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Banducci? Are you saying I skipped somebody?
I think Mr. Hartman did stand up like he was going to speak, but...
No, I think, we're moving on to Randy Neal. Randy Neal, welcome.
Hello, I enjoy the passion in this room, although I think a lot of people in this room are misinformed. If you're upset about the accreditation being brought under review, there's only one person that you need to direct your ire towards, and that's Christie Woods. Second of all, there's a principle called representative government. The will of this elected board was attempted to be subverted by an appointed board that does not represent the will of the people. Now, I for one am highly in favor of the community's representative government will not being subverted. I am tired of the lawfare that's often targeted at volunteer outstanding members of this community. That's how they got one of the other trustees to resign, is under threat of lawsuit. And now there's another lawsuit been brought up to try and subvert the will of the people again. I'm tired of all the ill will and I hope that the relentless assault on this board and this school by the left will stop. I really, they're willing to do whatever it takes necessary, including make a false sample ballot to try and fool the voter, to try and get their trustees elected to this One, replicating the central committee's ballot. Well, guess what? It didn't work. The people have spoken, these are...
Thank you, sir. Security, if we could take the sign out and in the corner there? Is there a Mark Syke? And a Robert Shepler? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Mark Syke. I'm a longtime resident of Post Falls. I apologize to the folks if I got loud in the lobby, but I am proud of my Idaho heritage. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. A common, this isn't a verbatim verse, this is, anyway. Repent, make straight the way. The words come from Isaiah and we attribute them to John the Baptist. And we read these in the coming of the Christ child. You have an unusual opportunity. There's not a lot of justice in this world, but you have a second chance. Your whole agenda on curing the past votes gives you the chance to do the right thing. I want to say, I am a Christian. And some of the actions in the campaign material for this makes my role as a Christian really hard. This is not an institution where people try to, this is North Idaho. This, we don't have a bunch of communists or anti-Christian people on staff at North Idaho College. Don't try to put the sins of Yale and Princeton and Harvard on North Idaho College. So I do ask you to make straight the way. Take the right path. Don't go down this path of division and, as Tom said, we need to know, you know, you have, you should use rhetoric and logic and try to convince people in the way that you want to go with the college. But you're silent, so everybody's mad because we're suspicious.
Thank you, sir. Robert Shepler and Karyn Shepler, forgive me.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen. My name's Robert Shepler and I'm a Cardinal. I graduated here in 98. My mother was a Cardinal, my son's a Cardinal, my children are Cardinals. I've got friends and family that have attended here and gathered and enjoyed a great educational experience. They gained their future careers based on what they learned here. And that's a wide variety of careers, everything from teachers to lawyers to professional businessmen. The education and experience that children and returning veterans like myself who have gone to school here have set their future courses through what they've learned at NIC. The risk to our accreditation right now is 100% unacceptable to everybody in this audience. The loss of that accreditation dooms the future of our school. This institution is beyond politics. It is about maintaining its integrity for our students and our future so we can continue to do what we do and how we do that and get our education. And it's not just the college experience. NIC is also supportive all over the northern five counties. It goes from Bonner's Ferry to St. Mary's, all the way down to Plummer. It educates everyone east to the Silver Valley and west to Post Falls, provides jobs for our community, it provides a future for our children. Provides jobs for our community. It provides a future for our children. It provides a future for our veterans. It provides the GED programs that so many of our students that can't graduate a traditional high school have that opportunity to get their education, get that diploma. The credits that they earn here transfer everywhere. They have to maintain and have that ability for that to continue. The program needs to stay accredited. Put the politics aside, please. Solve the accreditation problem. Keep the institution going. Figure out the rest later, but let's get this going and keep it going the way it needs to be, please. Thank you.
Karyn Shepler? A Dylan Shepler on deck? And a Gary Williams, please stand by.
My name is Karen Shepler. If you could scroll back up so that we could see the mission statement of the college, that would be amazing. That is what the five of you are tasked with. That and only that. The politics, the religion, the division, it needs to be put aside. We need to have this college more than anything else as a first-generation college graduate. I had the opportunity to come here to better myself after four generations of my family working here. If NIC weren't here, we wouldn't have that opportunity. My son would not be going to the University of Idaho this year if we didn't have this college. So I'm asking you to get a real attorney, not a real estate attorney. Put the lawsuits aside. I don't care who you have as a president, but have a legal president and stop voting them out every six months. Do your job. And if it's too much for you, if it's more than you signed on for, there's the door.
Thank you. Is this, state your name, please?
Hi, my name is Dylan Shepler. I am the aforementioned son of the previous two speakers.
Okay, welcome.
I was a student at Lake City High School when I was offered the, uh, option to take dual enrollment through North Idaho College. Through my experiences here on campus, I have seen that North Idaho College has been a center point for the community for as long as I've been alive and even longer. Frankly, without this university, there isn't much opportunity for a lot of people around here to get post-high school education besides, you know, moving more than an hour and a half away to go to someplace like U of I. With the loss of accreditation, it would be a disaster for places like this specifically because you wouldn't be able to have many of the programs that, uh, enhance the local community such as dual enrollment, people being able to take classes through here, get their degrees, anything like that. Without accreditation, the whole thing goes to nothing. As such, I would appreciate it if, well, I think I speak for everyone here. If we could figure this whole thing out, you know, put stuff aside, just, you know, focus on the interest of a better community and focus on keeping the accreditation above all else as well as continuing the work of the college. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Williams? A Keshez Benlin, Barrylin? Uh, Keshez Baylin, B- B- K-E-S-H-I-Z, forgive me? S- state your name, please?
Hi, my name is Keisha Berglin. I am here to address the concerns of accreditation. I am a NIC and U of I alumni who was able to earn both of my degrees on this campus and I have since used those degrees to give back to our community. All three of my last positions have required my degrees and without those, I would not be able to serve the underserved population of people in our community with developmental disabilities. I am also the sister of two current students, one of which is set to not only graduate high school but also graduate with her associates in the spring because of the dual enrollment program. If, sorry. One of the reasons that NIC is a valuable asset to our community and is these programs that allow for people in our community to get that education that they need to give back to our community without having to move away, as he was just saying. One of the biggest concerns that you guys should be addressing is accreditation. You should be putting aside your political opinions and doing what's right for the college. That is why you were elected. You were elected to act in the best interest of the college, its faculty, and its students. I urge you to please think about that and do what is right to get accreditation, not at risk anymore, so that our community still has this resource. It seems that one of the biggest concerns with accreditation is uncertainty in leadership. So I urge you to take back your decision to put the president on leave and reinstate him to his position as he is qualified and well-liked at the-
Thank you. A Gary Williams is invited down and a Mike Gridley is welcome to the mic. Uh, a Mike Gridley, I believe you're closest to the microphone. Go for it.
I thought I was on deck, so-
You, you are on deck. If there's a Gary Williams, you're respectfully now on deck, so go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Mike Gridley. I'm a retired, uh, city attorney from Coeur d'Alene for twenty years. I've been an attorney for forty years and am a member of the Texas Bar, was a member of the New Mexico Bar, and the Idaho Bar. I went to law school, graduated from the University of Notre Dame Law School and am here to encourage you strongly to stop wasting my money. I have been a taxpayer for twenty years in Coeur d'Alene, supporting NIC and my tax dollars go to pay for the settlements that Mr. Torgerson talked about. You are proposing to bring in another president? Are you kidding me? We have one. We have a very qualified, well-liked president who has been put on administrative leave for no good reason. I repeat that, no good reason. And-
Please respect this time.
Bring, bring him back, address the accreditation issues, and then work to solve the problems. Just go forward. But going forward in the manner that you've chosen to go forward in this manner will not work out. Secondly, your attorney, Mr. McCumber, is not qualified by his own admission to be a lawyer for this entity. He is not qualified and at three hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, which works out to be thirty-two dollars and fifty cents every six minutes, thirty-two dollars and fifty cents every six minutes, he is wasting my money and every other property owner in, uh, this state or in this county. So I would say, and I offer my services, I would volunteer. I don't want the job. I would volunteer to consult. There is a team of lawyers that would be willing to volunteer and consult to help you deal with these issues until you can do a proper selection.
Thank, thank you, sir. Is there a Gary Williams and a Michael Barnes? You're on deck. And a Summer Bushnell? A Gary Williams, last call. A Michael Barnes. A Summer, Summer Bushnell? Welcome. Please, please state your name.
Uh, my name's Gary Williams.
Okay, welcome. And, and if your other name was called, please come close to the microphone too, to be close. Okay.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, my name's Gary Williams. I'm a lifetime resident of Coeur d'Alene, born here. My father was born here, my wife and I, my kids, and now my grandkids are all, uh, either alumni or students of NIC. It's provided me and my wife and kids with an education that led to, uh, successful living and not only, I mean, it's so many people that I know the same thing. Accreditation means everything here. If it's gone, the school's gone. And I really don't get why that has to happen. It seems to me that everything was going great here at this school until three particular people on this board started to destroy this school. And I don't know why. I don't know why, and that's been brought up before. What's your goal for this? Firing presidents that are qualified, hiring a wrestling coach to be a president. It's ludicrous. So I don't know where this is gonna go, but I hope that somewhere down the road, you guys get recalled or whatever. Because this can't go on. This school, if this school goes or if it loses its accreditation, the degrees from this will be worth nothing. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Gary Williams. Please come, please state your name.
My name is Michael Barnes.
Welcome.
And I am a conservative husband and father of three, as well as a co-CEO of a fast-growing consumer products company with around fifty employees. I've interacted with dozens of attorneys and been responsible for selecting a half dozen attorneys on matters such as contract law, employment, intellectual property, M&amp;A, international, and corporate governance. This statement is my opinion. Art McCumber is not qualified to be the NIC attorney. Art is a real estate attorney and does not list any expertise in corporate governance or public entity law. From my inquiries, he is not a well-respected member of the legal community and he has an abysmal success rate in court. Of the six times Art argued before the Idaho Supreme Court, his clients lost in four of those cases. And in the other two, neither party prevailed or the case was remanded. Not one clear win. Any good attorney would be careful to avoid a conflict of interest. But public records show Art McCumber has donated to the campaigns of Banducci, Wagner, and Mackenzie, the three trustees that voted to hire Art at over a fifty percent higher fee than the previous attorney. This potential conflict of interest was not disclosed according to NIC's Conflict of Interest Policy 3.02.15. At the meeting on Monday the fifth, Banducci affirmed that he prepared the last-minute resolution to hire Art and then laughed off concerns about an open-meeting law violation. At Thursday's meeting, Art then said that unbeknownst to the other trustees, he just happened to bring his generous fee agreement to the prior meeting. This to avoid admitting there were prior deliberations to hire him and open-meeting law violations. And even if this was the case, it shows extreme irresponsibility for the trustees to hire on the spot without vetting. To the three trustees that hired your unqualified friend and campaign donor, your actions demonstrate at best your incompetence and at worst your corrupt cronyism.
Summer Bushnell, welcome. Please state your name.
Summer Bushnell? I wanted to make a positive comment first. I actually attended my first NIC men's basketball game on Sunday. Very cheap compared to like a ZAG, going to see the ZAGs and I really, really enjoyed it. My teenager's very into basketball, so I'll be back to see that again. Hadn't enjoyed that. One of the meetings I watched online, there were some comments about getting down here to see that, so I appreciate that. Um, I actually agree with one of the people that talked about the recall. If all the commenters are ignoring two elections two years apart, I worry that we're becoming election deniers. And if you have the gumption to do the recall, do it. Otherwise, we all need to accept what's happening and pray for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Aaron Ferraro, Tom Green, Rob Robinson, please make your way to the microphone.
Hello, thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Aaron Ferraro. I am a instructor at NIC. I teach the CNA program. I've also served the last three years at Cooten Hospital, um, as a registered nurse there, taking care of this community. I love this community. It is just incredible to me. I mean, it's five degrees outside and look at all of you guys here. It's because you care. I love it, yeah. So my big concern is, um, I don't think maybe the community even recognizes the impact that NIC's issues has on the hospital setting. Your hospital and this school are directly connected. There is one college in town that supplies all your nurses, all your CNAs, your med techs, your phlebotomists, your surgical technicians, all of the programs that we offered at NIC directly impact the hospital. I taught today and I'm having to filter questions about my CNA students who plan to go on to nursing school and serve our community. They're asking me what, every day. Every day that I have to have a conversation, it's not a matter of if we lose accreditation. Every day that we're even talking about it is damaging this school, is damaging the hospital setting. Nurses are going elsewhere. They don't, this is the second time now that I'm having to have these accreditation con- conversations with these CNA students. And they're looking elsewhere. And this community, I don't know if you've noticed, but this hospital, overwhelming. This population boom that has happened in here, that hospital is barely able to support the boom here. You cannot afford even to be talking about losing accreditation.
Thank you for coming. Tom Green? Hey, Rob Robinson, please make your way to the microphone. Is that Tom Green in the hallway there? Or, yeah, welcome.
Sure, because the-
Please state your name in, in the microphone.
Speaking for myself tonight, but I work at the NIC Workforce Training Center, so I'm gonna have to talk fast because I got a lot to get through.
Tom Green, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, I'm gonna start your timer.
Alright. In twenty-twenty-one, the Workforce Training Center had six thousand, six hundred and eighty total class enrollments and served forty-eight hundred students. We actually have more students come through our doors than main campus. For those of you not familiar with workforce trainings, who think tonight's agenda only affects the main college, let me tell you, tonight's actions will affect much more than that. We offer learning opportunities for apprenticeships, health careers, trades in industry, business, industri- industrial skills, emergency services, safety credentials, computers, career development, and testing. We train your plumbers, your electricians, heavy equipment operators, welders, firefighters, HVAC repairmen, construction workers, phlebotomists, dental assistants, mill rights, log scalers, truck drivers, home inspectors, and EMTs. We train your boat captains, your forklift operators, your flaggers, and workers, hazardous waste sites, your nursing assistants, patient care technicians, mental health technicians, medical billers, coders, administrative assistants, bookkeepers, and accountants. We, we keep your employees in compliance with OSHA, your CNA certified, and your miners safe. We work with manufacturers, lumber mills, mining operations, residential commercial builders, engineering firms, nonprofits, veterans, and military family services, and so many, many others. We are not deep state. We are not part of some cabal or whatever conspiracy nonsense is being spread on social media. We are your neighbors and our only agenda is to help people change their lives for the better by giving them options, giving them the tools they need to pull themselves up while being an economic engine from North Idaho. The center relies on NIC funding for insurance, for the building, for operations, employee benefits, and other resources. Without an accredited NIC, we will not be able to keep our doors open. Please, please take a moment, pump the brakes, and table tonight's agenda at the very least. Take some time to reconsider what tonight's action items will do to the college and exponentially thousands of lives and generations of Idaho families. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Robinson and Chad Rukaski, please make your way down. Please state your name in the microphone.
My name's Rob Robinson. I'm a forty-six-year resident of Coeur d'Alene. I'm a longtime member of the North Idaho Booster Club and I'm here just to make a couple comments. Number one, accreditation is absolutely key. We are blessed in this community with North Idaho College. It's a, it's a gem of a university. We're lucky to have it and you are risking it at the present time. Very important you keep it going. Number two, Nick Swain, you all went out, you did a nationwide search, you interviewed, and you hired Nick. Nick is a top drawer person, a great leader. He's loved by the kids. He's loved by the professors. And it was ridiculous to put him on leave.
Please respect this time.
As much as I love wrestling, uh, and I have great respect for wrestling coaches, wrestlers, Todd was a wrestler, I know that. and I have great respect for wrestling coaches, wrestlers, Todd was a wrestler, I know that, but going to try to get the prior wrestling coach to come back and fill in while Nick was put on leave, I think is ridiculous, inappropriate, and I just want to go on record saying I'm highly opposed to that. Secondly, or thirdly, what you did with trying to bring in Art McCumber, or his coming forward and taking on the lawyer position, I think is ridiculous also. You need to go out, do a search, put it up for bid, and hire a top drawer lawyer. I was a lawyer in this community for 40-plus years. I'm retired now, so I want to go on record and say, get yourself a good attorney. Mark Lyons was a top drawer attorney. Finally, I just want to say, I support the move to the SWAC as well as bringing on women's wrestling. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Rob, Chad Rukaske. Sorry. Was that Rob Robinson who just spoke? And Howard Coons, you're on deck. There's a Chad Rukaske, Rukaske? Okay, I see a hand raise. Mr. Coons, you're right after this gentleman who's walking down the hallway. Please state your name in the microphone.
Chad Rukasi. I'm a logical, intelligent, concerned citizen. So I am not as informed as I would like to be about all the issues that are happening here. But I think that there is an assumption that the board is chartered to act in the best interest of the college. And I would like to just, it doesn't seem like the board is acting in the best interest of the college. It seems like the board, you have made decisions that are driving the organization towards failure. So my question is, who are your constituents? What is your charter? Are you supposed to be acting in the best interest of the college? And I would like a response in the last 40 seconds of my time, Chairman.
Are we, I would say? Is there any other comment personally, sir? I believe I am working in the interest of the college.
And that's why I've given this college the last two years of my life. And if you want to know my end goal to the community, you can look at that mission statement right up there. That's what was already in my notes. That's why I'm here tonight, to make sure that every one of the students at this college have an even better time and experience in college than I did. So that's why I ran to be a trustee.
And if that is true, I thank you. And if that is true for each one of you, I do thank you truly for your time. But I have to call into question the authenticity of that statement.
All questions are welcome here. Is that Mr. Coons, I believe?
My name's Howard Coons. I'll answer his question. I'm one of your constituents. I support Banducci, Mackenzie, and Wagner. They're conservatives. What do I mean by that? They fear God, they respect the law, and they have good moral and family values. I know them. They're good people. There was a lot of questionable things that happened under that appointed board. I don't have all the inside information, but I trust that you guys do. And I trust you to act accordingly. A lot of people came to that last meeting. They had grown-up bodies, but they acted like two-year-olds throwing tantrums. Who are these people that want to save NIC? They weren't mad at the entire board, they were just mad at the conservatives. In other words, there's Zimmerman's people, there are Corkle's people. I'll go a step further and say they're Christie Wood's people. They'd welcome her back on this board in a minute. This is the true legacy of her years on the board, a contingent of people whom she has led to hate conservative values and conservative people. They embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is another way of saying racism, socialism, and sexual perversion.
Please respect this gentleman's time. Please respect this gentleman's time.
They're woke. They're intolerant of anybody who doesn't agree with them. They'll cancel you if they can. There's even a criminal element, as witnessed by the fire alarm that went off. I have this to say to trustees Banducci, Mackenzie, and Wagner, which is, by the way, BMW, a sign of sure quality. The only reason Corkle and Zimmerman are on this board is because...
Mr. Coons, thank you for coming down. I'm sorry the crowd took some of your time. Mr. Prado, is that Joseph Prado? Welcome.
I'm Joe Prado, and first of all, I will say that I do support Banducci, Wagner, and Mackenzie. My parents, my parents were, they both went to college. My mom was a nurse, and my dad was a wrestler as well, and he was a teacher. They grew up in the 50s, but they didn't turn out to be beatniks or hippies, okay? And they didn't like the direction that academia was taking. I see signs out there protesting, saying that, "Stop weaponizing education." Well, that's exactly what happened in the 60s and 70s. So people like me, a Roman Catholic who wanted to go to college, I was training, I wanted to be a historian, and I still plan on doing it eventually, we feel like we have no parity with those who cry out diversity and inclusion. We're not included in that inclusive diversity. You know, if I have a biblical view of creation, not included. If I have a biblical view of sex and gender, not included. If I believe in anything, not included. To say that you should put aside your politics and your beliefs to do just your job, that's a lie, because that would mean you're just some hunk of meat up there doing work without any opinions, without any political leanings. And I will say that the vast majority of Idahoans are right-wing Christian conservatives. They're just not here tonight, but they're everywhere. They're everywhere. So I do support, I do support you. I will wish you a Merry Christmas, and you're in my prayers. And I'm sorry if I raised my voice a little loudly tonight. Again, I'm just seeking parity with the people who are here now, who a lot of them are older but apparently never grew up. So thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you for coming down. Welcome, please state your name. I believe this is our last public comment.
Last one. Hello, my name is Vincent James. I didn't know much about the board before I came here, but someone handed me a flyer when I walked in, and there was the campaign platform of Mike Wagner. And there's a quote here, he says, "I'm disturbed at the un-American and anti-white programs that have been appearing across the country, and I have even seen some of them appear in our community. These need to be removed with prejudice, and any faculty pushing these programs needs to be removed from their positions." I agree. I agree 100%. I didn't know much about the trustees before I came here, but I 100% support Mike Wagner now. I also, read the other side? I'll read the other side. Someone told me to read the other side.
Please respect this gentleman's time. Please respect this gentleman's time.
Someone told me to read the other side. And this is Art McCumber, who a lot of people have been bashing tonight, who's supposedly the lawyer you hired. He seems hilarious, actually. He said, "Why don't you quit marking yourself up and piercing yourself as if you have low self-esteem while trying to disguise it as some sort of style? It is the lowest-class style you can go in my book. Just bring me my food and my check, and then go away. You look disgusting." That's hilarious. I like Art McCumber now, too. In fact, I like Art, I like Greg, I like Mike Wagner. It sounds like this board is awesome, actually. And you know, you talk about a population boom. People come here because it's conservative. They want to get away from liberals. So liberals just take the L and go home. Or leave, or go back to like Oregon.
Please respect this gentleman's time. Thank you for a public comment. Everyone, congratulations on a successful public comment tonight. Constituent reports, if you'd please make your way down. That's starting with Aznic, Damian Maxwell. The microphone.
Does the board need copies of the resolution?
All right.
Give it to Shannon.
Please give it to Shannon. You've given to us before, the same one, right?
Yeah, it's the same one here.
Yeah, excellent. We're good there. This is your part.
So this is the Aznic Resolution Regarding North Idaho College Board of Trustees by Damian Maxwell, Aznic President, sponsored by Alex Elliott and Angel Bear, Aznic President Pro Tempore and Vice President. Whereas, the Associated Students of North Idaho College Student Government has passed a vote of no confidence in the Board of Trustees. As elected officials, it is your responsibility to maintain the values, standards, and integrity of established and procurement policy of the institution while working to support the best interests of all your constituents, including the student body. We have not been represented by the Board of Trustees, and the actions of the Board of Trustees have not been in the interest of the students. The recent actions by the Board of Trustees, including but not limited to placing President Nick Swain on immediate administrative leave, has caused large amounts of concern. Therefore, in response to the lack of clarity in recent board decisions, the board must immediately move to complete transparency and practice professional, ethical, and legal conduct. This involves making all items available on the agenda before meetings, speaking clearly, not whispering as to obstruct one's voice, and following all NIC policies and state procurement laws. The board will reinstate Dr. Nick Swain as President of North Idaho College effective immediately in order to exercise complete transparency and start representing the best interests of the students and North Idaho College. Next, I'd like to talk about the student perspective, from my perspective. $15,729.91 I've invested in this college. That's two summers I've spent time living in my car to afford to be here, walking up and down the aisles of grocery stores with an empty stomach and a calculator, trying to find out what I can afford to eat. None of that mattered. What mattered was I was here and I was receiving my education. If you want to talk about restless nights, try being woken up by spotlights and police in parking lots in the middle of the night telling you that you can't sleep here. I have sacrificed and invested more time and energy into this college than you can imagine. If you want to talk about stakeholders in this college, here I am and here we are. North Idaho College is full of students like me who have given everything just to be here. Our voices deserve to be heard on this campus, and as elected officials, it is your job to recognize that. We don't want an interim president. We don't want Michael Sabali. We want transparency. We want representation. We want President Nick Swain. Chair Mackenzie, in a voicemail you left for Aznic, you finished it by saying, "I work for y'all." Now was the time to prove that. The student voice has spoken, and if you truly care about the student voice, you'll listen to what I've said here tonight. And I want to make it very clear that you have two options. Reinstate President Nick Swain effective immediately, or look me in the eyes and tell me that my voice doesn't matter on this campus.
Faculty Assembly, Ben Tashida.
Trustees, the faculty assembly has met twice since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the trustees. During that time, we had one regular meeting and a special meeting. The special meeting, we did have a resolution presented and passed, and I read it now to you. Faculty Assembly of North Idaho College present the NIC Board of Trustees with the following resolution after the recent actions of the Board of Trustees on December 5th, 2022, December 8th, 2022, and December 10th, 2022. The Faculty Assembly reaffirms its previous resolutions of no confidence to the Board of Trustees as presented on October 26th, 2021, February 2nd, 2022, and March 18th, 2022. Since those resolutions, not only has the Board of Trustees not addressed any of the faculty assemblies previously resolved concerns, but they have instead continued to demonstrate the same troubling behavior of noncompliance with basic governance standards specifically. The board continues to fail to maintain institutional integrity, fail to demonstrate clear authority, roles, and responsibilities, fail to maintain an effective system of leadership, fail to demonstrate transparent decision-making structures and processes. On December 5th, 2022, the Board of Trustees introduced and approved Resolutions 2022-3 and 2022-4. In these resolutions, the Board of Trustees suspends the following policies: 7.01.04, 2.02.01, 3.02.03, 2.01.04. The act of suspending policies without engagement of the college is evidence that the Board of Trustees is not acting in good faith and is in direct violation of NWCCU standards for participatory governance. Resolution 2022-3 suspends policy 7.01.04, policy for awarding continuous professional services and contracts, and immediately hires the Law Office of Arthur M. McCumber. The hiring of Arthur McCumber violates policy number 7.01.04 because it prevents any proper vetting to ensure that Arthur McCumber was without conflict of interest in respect to the Board of Trustees, administration, faculty, and staff. Neither did the Board of Trustees allow any participatory governance in the process of hiring and selecting legal counsel for the college. Resolution 2022-4 institutes a hiring freeze for all vice presidents, provosts, deans, and other members of the president's cabinet, and then grants the Board of Trustees the ability to have input on the hiring of all vice presidents, provosts, deans, and other members of the president's cabinet. Again, this action requires the Board of Trustees to also suspend policy number 2.02.01, 2.01.04, and policy 3.02.03. Such action erodes the standards of governance and results in the elimination of all boundaries in regards to the board's defined authority, roles, and responsibility. Just as the firing of Dr. Rick McLennan was without cause and results resulted in a major disruption to North Idaho College, the board's decision on December 5th, 2022, to place Dr. Nick Swain on administrative leave continues to disrupt the college's ability to meet its mission. Both actions by the board undermine standards regarding conditions of employment and the criteria and procedures for evaluation, retention, promotion, and termination. These actions send the message that the Board of Trustees can operate with impunity. At the December 10th, 2022 Board of Trustees Special Meeting, the board brought forth a motion to appoint a board volunteer analyst. The quoted job description and duties are as follows. A board volunteer analyst works with NIC college trustees and staff to collect and interpret data to help the college Board of Trustees take actionable steps to improve their performance and meet trustee goals. Note that this appointment is stated to meet the goals of the trustees and not the college, and as evidenced, the trustee goals are possibly incongruent with the mission, vision, and values of North Idaho College. Furthermore, upon replacement of President Dr. Nick Swain on administrative leave, the board created a leadership vacuum without a chief executive officer. This is a crisis of the board's own creation. The Board of Trustees uses the excuse of issues with the president's contract as justification for the administrative leave. In previous Board of Trustees meetings, a typographical error was identified and corrected. The Faculty Assembly has full confidence in and support for Dr. Nick Swain as President of North Idaho College. He is fully qualified and equipped to lead North Idaho College in our current challenges and into the future. The mission of North Idaho College is to meet the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning. The center of our mission revolves around serving students. Though the board states that its primary goal is to support students, it is apparent by the board's actions that this is not the case. For example, the board chose to remove the president of our college the week before finals were to be administered, creating a chaotic distraction to students. Instead of asking questions of their professors regarding preparation for exams, they are instead questioning the impact of the board's actions on accreditation. Be it resolved, the Faculty Assembly calls for the immediate reinstatement of Dr. Nick Swain. Be it further resolved, that the faculty of NIC renew their October 26th, 2021, February 2nd, 2022, and March 18th, 2022 votes of no confidence in the Board of Trustees' ability to serve the college's best interest. Be it further resolved, that the faculty of NIC stands with the staff and students of NIC, and there are strong resolutions and votes of no confidence. Be it further resolved, that the faculty of NIC... Be it further resolved, that the faculty of NIC call for the Board of Trustees to follow NWCCU recommendations immediately for the good of the institution and the students. This was adopted unanimously at the Faculty Assembly meeting on December 14th, 2022. I will not stand for questions, given the culture that this board has created.
Thank you for coming down. Staff Assembly, please.
Thank you, Ben.
Where may you be? Welcome.
Good evening, Board of Trustee members, President Swain, wherever you're watching from, students, staff, faculty, and community members. I stand before you tonight as Chair of Staff Assembly, so incredibly proud of the important work my colleagues are doing, of the care and passion they employ every day, of their tenacity and perseverance they display in getting up and coming to work even under these difficult and oppressive circumstances. During the past four Board of Trustee meetings, I have shared with you the incredible work my coworkers are doing, the occasions we celebrate, and our special guests we invite to educate us so that we can continue to always learn how to better serve our students and the community, because that is why we are here. Tonight, I must share something different. On December 14th, 2022, Staff Assembly voted to pass a vote of no confidence in the Board of Trustees, which reads as follows. Staff Assembly Resolution Regarding the North Idaho College Board of Trustees. Whereas, the Staff Assembly of North Idaho College has passed a vote of no confidence in the Board of Trustees. North Idaho College's mission statement reads, "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning." Currently, the Board of Trustees are failing in assisting staff, faculty, but most importantly, students in upholding this mission. Recent and continuing actions by the Board of Trustees have created a sense of distrust, fear, and uncertainty within the staff of North Idaho College. Therefore, the board must act with all haste to reinstate President Nick Swain, conduct all meetings with transparency, abide by the policies of North Idaho College, and engage in respectful language as befits elected officials. Thank you. Thanks to my staff.
Thank you. Senate, Neil Doyle.
Thank you, Chair McKenzie, President Swain, wherever you are, board members and guests. The NIC Senate last met on December 15th, where we were joined by Karen Hubbard for a second read on Policy and Procedure 3.02.23.01, Conflict Resolution Mediation, and Policy and Procedure 3.02.29, which is Alternate Work Schedules. Both the second reads of those policies were approved. The Senate also voted to amend the agenda to include discussion on a resolution to be read to the Board of Trustees. We approved that resolution, which I will read now. North Idaho College College Senate Resolution, December 15th, 2022, reinstatement of College Policies 2.01.04, 3.02.03, 7.01.04. On December 5th, 2022, the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College introduced two resolutions to dispend the following college policies. 2.01.04, Governance Creation Revision or Elimination of College Policy and Procedure; Policy 3.02.03, Filling of New and Vacant Positions; and Policy 7.01.04, Continuous Professional Service Contracts. Policy 2.01.04 specifically defines the College Senate as, quote, "the primary vehicle for participatory government," governance, end quote. Additionally, this policy identifies that the College Senate will be afforded opportunity to provide timely feedback on, quote, "policy and procedural initiation changes or deletions," end quote. The board action to suspend Policy 2.01.04 removes constituents' voices and impedes participatory governance. Furthermore, NWCCU Accreditation Standard 2.8.4 requires North Idaho College to have decision-making structures which, quote, "must include provisions for the consideration of the views of faculty, staff, administration, and students on matters in which each has a direct and reasonable interest," end quote. The College Senate therefore requests the Board of Trustees immediately reinstate Policies 2.01.04, 3.02.03, and 7.01.04. If the Board of Trustees wishes to change or eliminate policies, the College Senate has the right to a voice in the process as per Accreditation Criteria Standard 2.8.4. Thank you.
Thank you. College Co-Leadership Report, Sarah Garcia Lloyd Duman. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, Board of Trustees. We appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. However, we feel that it's appropriate to decline making any statements at all because we have a long agenda in front of us and we would like to allow you to move forward with that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Moving. So, looking at the consent agenda ahead of us, I have concerns with the meeting minutes and wish to remove the meeting minutes from the consent agenda because I would like to work on some additions to them, minor additions mainly related to votes. But I motion, we accept the other items on the consent agenda. So, without objection, consent agenda is approved. Mr. Chair. Trustee Banducci.
So what you're asking for is you're making a motion to approve and accept the NIC financial audit for the year ending June 30, 2022. So that's the consent agenda item that you're asking for approval?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
It's a consent agenda, so it does not need a second as long as unanimous consent, and I believe we have that. Moving to the next one is meeting minutes, and if we could, I don't like tabling minutes, but if we could table it for one more, I worked all day in preparation for this meeting and that's the one agenda item. I didn't finish to my satisfaction enough, so I motion that we table the minutes to the next regular meeting.
I think they're having trouble hearing you.
Pardon me. Can you hear me now? Okay. To summarize, we had consent, unanimous consent for the consent agenda for all, for the acceptance of the financial audit report. And we just discussed tabling the meeting minutes to the next meeting. So without objection, we're going to proceed. So, Trustee Mike Wagner. We're moving on to the Board of Trustees, the support topic. Board Assistant, really the first introduction at a regular board meeting. And if I could just take the floor on this topic, sir?
Yes.
So I wish to refer to the accreditation recommendation and read number four that was offered to the trustees in preparation for this meeting. Refrain from behavior that circumvents the president, CEO, or college policy or procedure, including engaging with others such as the attorney, volunteer, or consultant to usurp the authority of the president and CEO, disrupt participatory governance, and/or bypass college policy and procedure. And then it lists the sources and eligibility requirements and standards. And so I've talked with you with this, and in no way are you trying to circumvent the president or college policy. And to the contrary, you're trying to be open and improve governance, is what I'm hearing from you.
That is correct. In fact, I had discussed it with some of the folks before. The idea is to be very open about what we're doing, what we need to do, we need some assistance. And this person was to talk with, work with the board, not get involved in what the administration is doing. It's not appropriate for the board to be involved directly with what the administration is doing. That would be, actually, that's something I believe, something called balanced governance, which is you don't, the board doesn't get too involved, but it doesn't just walk away either and rubber stamp. So.
We, before this meeting, we even discussed motions. And, but I was thinking in preparation for this meeting, and I think the president is aware of your desire, and we leave it to the president to advance this idea.
Right. I'd be glad to come and talk to him and explain, and hopefully allay their concerns. We just need some assistance. One of the things that we need to work on is updating the policies. As you know, some of them are fairly old. And we needed some assistance with that. That's really all we're talking about.
And when he says policies, he means the specific board governance policies.
Board governance policies, not the policies that the administration is using at lower levels.
So, and that's really in response to the letter of warning.
Right, yeah.
And if you can, yes, so, so I think no motion is needed, and the harmony we can start to demonstrate will go a long way. So I want to thank you, sir, and I think we'll get there in time with this idea that you're talking about.
That's fine.
And. All right. Moving on to the next, Board of Trustees Support the Board Governance Consultant. I'd like to introduce them. So as a board, we need to actually improve our board governance. And Mike Wagner, so you have found the premier, in my opinion, excellent board governance consultant. So you've even done some due diligence on this topic, and your willingness to propose this candidate demonstrates your initiative and commitment to improve board governance. For the sake of accreditation, I'm actually excited to act and move on this consultant, but also wish to defer to the president's leadership to lead this college, to retain its accreditation. So I'd like to read number four. Well, I just read it above, but it's the same thing, that refrain from behavior that circumvents the president or college policy or procedure. And that's, also lists consultants in there, and that's not what we're trying to do here. So I think it's great, if anyone's looked in the board packet, like at Board of Trustees meetings, this is the opportunity for the public to hear various trustees' opinions on the subject. And this is our board meeting to talk together, like the business of the college. So. If, looking at the agenda and what we have, so I'm hoping we can reach a unanimous consent on this topic, that if the president feels that hiring Dr. Alsberry along with training from either AGB or ACCT is in the college's best interest, that the president be encouraged to schedule that right away. So the board is interested, from my perspective in talking, is in getting going and reviewing the board governance policies that are not part of the seven-year cycle review, and that's the focus of this consultant and training.
Correct.
So I can make a motion, or if any trustees have any opinions, now would be the time.
If this is a step in the right direction to improve our accreditation standards, I'm all for it.
I firmly believe this is, but as I, I'll read again, I'll just make the motion, so.
Could I make a comment?
Trustee Wagner, please.
Okay, so I've been checking his references. He has a lot of information. You look out on the website, he has a lot of experience. The objective here, people are asking for objectives, the objective is to make the trustee board more effective and efficient and mesh with the administration better. That's the objective. And this person has lots of education, lots that's applicable, has lots of experience. I talked to three of the, of the school boards that he was working with and is currently working with. Here's, I'd like to read the comments from the Nevada one. He's heartfelt. He's forthcoming. Now that he has helped them, they have a solid foundation for their policies. He's good working with legal counsel. He's a happy person. He started in 2016 and is still working for them. And he believes in the balanced governance approach. In other words, don't get involved in what the, and micromanage is the MBA term. I have an MBA. Don't micromanage the president and the staff, but get involved and be supportive and mesh, and so the, don't just be a rubber stamp. He facilitates communication. He helps with the first-time extensive board analysis, so what he would do is come and work with us as a board and give advice. He's solid, grounded in science and experience, builds consensus, and knows goals. Oh, this is Diane Nicolet. She works, she's on the board of the Washoe Nevada School District. And he has experience. Also, he was a keynote speaker for the Board, for Secondary School Association in 2014 for the state of Idaho. He's worked with a number of, he's worked with the Idaho State Board of Education, and so on and so on. You can look at all his information out on the web. He seems to, all three people that I've, well, I've talked to one, the other two left messages due to the time, and nobody said anything bad, and they all say he's great, and hopefully he could get us to all work together better. That's the objective.
That would be, I think, what everyone wants, so.
Chairman?
Trustee's.
So, just so I understand, what you're proposing is you want to create a new position that's going to support the board, help us work together, and the president is going to select that person and hire that person?
Not, not making a position right now. This is, it is listed as a.
A governance consultant?
Board of Trustees Support Board Governance Consultant. You can kind of think of it as the same training that AGB or ACT would provide. If you look in the board packet, there's two, there's a, there's a fee for studying two board meetings, or Board of Trustees meetings, and then one all-day training. Very similar to what ACCT did, did an all-day training. So it's not hiring like a permanent position employee. This is just, think of it as bringing forward an option of training.
Right. It's just, it's training. Yeah, it's not a position.
Yeah, I was really looking forward to that. But when you say "the president," did I hear you say you were already discussing this with Dr. Swain?
No. The, right now, we have two co-leads right now.
No, I thought I heard Mike say that.
Currently, we have two acting co-leads right now.
Okay.
Have you discussed that with them?
I, I believe we have.
Trustee Wagner?
No, just what's in the packet, I have not discussed it with them.
So the current co-CEOs don't have any, did not have a conversation with you?
Yeah, you mentioned to them Friday, right? I had a brief discussion with Sarah, and also context and other information here. This guy is an advanced person. We still need to go through the, I believe Sarah was going to give me on Monday, and I haven't seen it yet, Sarah Garcia, a quote or proposal for the regular board training, which is Association of Community Colleges.
So this is an addition?
It's an addition, yeah. We need to do the foundational work, and we need to do this guy. He's a consultant to come and help us on the board governance policies and to help us work together better.
I thought you did mention this even to, it was Sarah Lloyd and Steve Kurtz.
Yes.
They did mention it already to the colleagues.
How did you find this person, this gentleman?
He's out on the web, and actually knew some people that knew him, and I've actually worked, talked to him since April. I haven't found, I've looked for other people, haven't found anybody else. And he has an excellent reputation in this, and he's, I have a book called Balanced Board Governance that I've read. And also I have, in my background, I have 20 years getting organizations to work together better. And I have an MBA, and I have a bachelor's in business with a specialty in human resources. And so I looked at all this, and it fits in with everything that I had been taught in school, and the references are good. And he's the only person I've been able to find. He's supposed to be the best. He's even, he's gone all over the United States, and he's also consulted in 12 countries overseas.
So, then again, we're bringing options and leaving it to the president to steer the ship and through this accreditation.
How long would he be on?
Can you not hear me?
How long would he be serving us?
Well, just the two things. So he's available starting in February, so we'd have to schedule those, right? And then, right now, all we're looking at is the two sets of responsibilities or tasks. And then if we went and asked him to do more, then we would have to have another. And then, if we went and asked him to do more, then we would have to have another approval by the board. Okay, and the only thing I foresee there is if he needs to help us with the board governance policies, which I certainly think need to be updated, and I've been working towards that, then we, just depends on how much advice we need. But that's, no, it is not a long-term thing, it's just the, the training and the review of our board meetings.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Corcoran.
You know, it, it all sounds nice, and I looked at the guy's resume, and it's very impressive. The thing that concerns me the most, it keeps nagging at me, is once again, we're being presented with one choice, and no chance other than, I think I got the board agenda maybe two days ago, to become aware of this and, and to start addressing it. So, you know, just, just for the sake of effort, I would like to see at least one other applicant for the job, you know, so before we move forward on this. Because we've already hired a, an attorney, boom, and it appears, you know, we've got a contract for an interim president here, and I don't know the guy, I've never even heard of him before. I don't know what his background is, what his qualifications on it. So, once again, these things are coming to us, and we're being asked to, to vote on them without doing enough due diligence, you know, without. So, with that being said, can we table this for a meeting?
If, if we do that, and I have project management background lots, what I'm concerned about is I would like to have those board policies updated by April 15th for NWCCU.
We definitely can table this.
That was, that was the objective.
And the board could vote on this, but that, that's not what I'm even advocating for us that we do. I'm, I'm working, and what I'm asking is that we work in harmony with our co-leads and president at the time, and basically what we've said is, is this is a fabulous opportunity for training, which it is. And it's, if I look at the price and you compare it around for those that are experienced, it is right in the market line to.
That, that all, that all sounds really, really good, but I would, I would like to have some time before this becomes set in stone to discuss this with you on, on the phone, and discuss it with our co-leads, and.
Okay. All right, when it comes to AGB training and ACC training, the sooner we can schedule these things, the better.
I understand.
Are you fine, like, be, having unanimous consent for one of those two, and then Dr. Alsberry as a possible question mark beyond that? Or is it one of the three that you're concerned of for cost's sake, or could you kind of start?
I just feel like I'm not doing my, my due diligence, and I'm not being responsible enough by, by voting on Dr. Alsberry without knowing more about him and without seeing what else is available.
Yes, yes, so. The fabulous part of this meeting right now, sir, is that's, that's not what we're doing. And, and we're not saying Alsberry or nobody else, and we're not making this type of decision, that we're actually referring to the co-leads and presidents to, to have the experience and the time and investment to do that due diligence and, and to make that assessment and recommendation. So, basically, we're kind of deferring to their leadership to.
Okay, well, if, if, if the co-leads will come to us and say, we want this guy?
Okay, so, so that's, that's kind of what we're hoping for, so if, how about this? If, if the co-leads are, are, make, evaluate the three options, and we are open to two of them, we are open to one of them, and, because that's really, it's either AGB or ACCT, you normally go for just one of them. And then, if they think additionally, after talking to Dr. Alsberry and doing some due diligence themselves, if they additionally feel that one more person would, would benefit the college, then would you be open to that?
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's all we're looking for here at this meeting. So, and, and that would additionally give you time to have that conversation with them and to address any concerns. So, so we're not trying to rush any decision right now. So.
Chair McKenzie.
Trustee Zerman.
So, just to be clear, I really would like the actual training that has occurred in the past customarily for trustees. So, can we move forward with getting that scheduled and then let this kind of work its way out, as you've already alluded to?
That, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, perfect.
So, and to be, to be fair, this Dr. Alsberry is one of those options that, that would be on par with that same training. So, if you're more personally comfortable with AGB or ACCT, this would be the board meeting to express that, and that's why we're bringing this agenda forward.
Then I'm more comfortable with AGB and ACCT, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful, that's why we're having this board conversation.
Perfect.
Is there any other opinions?
Well, just to be clear, we, yes, we need the ACCT and the AGB, but this is actually an advanced course on top of that, so you would need the other two also.
So, not to come back to you, but would you be open to both, or would you rather not?
Open to both AGB slash ACCT and Dr. Ashberry? I, I feel like there's three here.
Yes, so, let's, let's put them in categories, A and B. There's category A, which is or, AGB or ACCT.
Correct.
And then, there's category B, Dr. Alsberry. So, if you only want one from category A, great. If you want one from category A and category B, this would be the time to say so. I personally think one from category A and B would be super beneficial, and personally, I've, one of the reasons I'm actually very excited about Dr. Alsberry is AGB and ACC, I'm sure they can customize to whatever we want, but I, I would, I would like someone with his experience and knowledge that, that can kind of weigh in on, on what our policies should be. And when I took the last training, I did provide lots of topical questions, like what if this scenario, what if this scenario? And I actually built a lot of my confidence as a trustee of like, I'm reading these books, and what these books are saying is right, and we're not doing that. And so, that training is good, but essentially, what I would even like to see is two days' worth of training. So, there's one from category A, and then another day's worth of training of category B. So, that, that's, that's what we're asking for here.
Okay, thank you.
So, going, trying to move forward, would you be open to both, one from category A and one from category B, or is it fiscal expensive, or?
I'm open to either one in category A.
Okay, excellent.
So, that's determined.
And do we have unanimous consent with that?
Yes.
Excellent, we're making progress.
Okay, and then regarding topic B, Dr. Ashberry, I'm not opposed to that, however, I feel like I would like to speak to the co-CEOs.
Sure.
Before having a final decision on that.
Okay, okay, and, well, then, that, that's how we're feeling, do we want to?
My concern is a little bit focused around rewriting policy, and I feel with what we have from the NWCCU and what they're talking to us about policies, we should probably take a pause from making any drastic changes until we get those things settled. So, that's why I'm not so eager to move forward in rewriting any policies.
I would agree that we downshift a bit in life, but just to go back to the letter of warning, even in the letter of warning, it states that this board said we would do stuff, as in we reinstated the board conduct policy, and then we said that we're going to work on it, and then we really didn't. And then, the appointed trustees, they did do that one-sentence modification, but, but to be fair, all along, I've expressed general concern, I've abided by the policy, don't get me wrong, but I expressed general concern that I think this college would benefit from getting addressed sooner than later, and, and that's just, just my sense of urgency, that I, I would like to just make progress on what we said we would do, instead of putting Band-Aid on it, for the sake of accreditation. Like, that's, if you read the letter, and I can even pull it up and read it, put it on the screen, that's the truth, so. So, we have, looks like we're able to schedule from category A, and we'll leave it to the co-leads to, to decide which one of those. And do you even want to see one of the papers, or should we just tell them to schedule it and make it happen?
In terms of which?
AGB or ACCT, I recommend we just tell them to make it happen, one of them.
I, I would agree, I have reviewed the ACCT page, and I know that Sarah had worked on it and let them select it, and let's get it scheduled and do it as fast as possible. Right now, I know I'm comfortable with ACCT.
Okay, and I'll, I'll tell you this, Trustee Zerman, Trustee Corcoran, what if the co-leads, president, CEO, what if they assess Dr. Alsberry, look around for options, and if they, they feel that it's worthwhile to schedule Dr. Alsberry, then, then they're welcome to schedule it, or they're welcome to not? Is that okay, or no? I mean, if, if they want to sk, I'm, I'm not even focused on Dr. Alsberry. If they find, in category B, they find five people, and they find a fourth person to be better, they're going to communicate to this board, and that we're just open to even a second day's worth of training, because essentially, it's our time. It's two days' worth of training, so.
I would like to get more input from the co-chairs.
Okay. Moving, satisfied, or?
Yeah.
Okay, moving to the next topic. All right, accreditation review, so. This board takes retaining accreditation seriously to everyone in the crowd and the community. I personally have gone over the letter of warning consistently, and the most recent communication with NWCC moved the response date up from April 15th of next year to January 4th of next month. So, the college is not on a show cause status yet, which would notice accreditation would be in jeopardy, but the college is now required to write to many more eligibility requirements and standards for accreditation than we had to before, mainly due to recent actions of NIC board of trustees, as mentioned by the Senate, which documented very well, actually. The accrediting agency wants to see the immediate response and evidence by January 4th, so they want to see behavior, immediate change, that this board will adhere to the eligibility requirements and standards of accreditation, and under, as me as chair, this board will be doing transparent governance and will go into executive session as much as legally prudent. Every member on this board will be accountable for their votes and words. The community needs to pull together to report the whole story and rally around North Idaho College. Think of the educational goals accomplished, and this is what we are about, we heard from public comment today. People are so used to assuming conspiracy or bad motives, you don't get anywhere that way. Your motives are inferred by your actions of what you do. So, the next agenda items aim to remedy some prior actions. On December 8th, the board received communications from a lawyer in this area alleging that the board violated open meeting laws at its recent 12-5 meeting. The letter alleged that the board failed to include the subsequently approved resolutions in its agenda packet, and also alleged that the trustees may have held serial meetings according to Mr. Mackimer's contract in violation of open meeting laws. As chair of the board, I believe it pertinent to explain some of Idaho's open meeting laws requirements. For serial meetings, a quoting, a quorum, forgive me, a quorum must be present for a violation of open meeting laws. This is true for serial meetings, there must be serial meetings with enough of the trustees to be a quorum. As chair, I have to ensure when soliciting agenda topics from other trustees to remain on agenda item requests and not debate the issues consecutively with each trustee. For example, I have solely worked the agenda topic trustee assistant with trustee Wagner, and reserved conversation or debate beyond trustee Wagner for the open board meeting. There is a fine line in providing information to allow trustees, as you've requested, trustee Zerman, to prepare and providing too much information discussion. So, for meeting notices and agendas, there's timing. Open meeting laws require that the notice and agenda for each meeting is timely posted. Idaho Code 74204, the timing of these notices are based on the type of meeting that will take place. Regular meetings require five calendar day notice and agendas posted within 48 hours before the meeting. Special meetings, the 12-8 and 12-10 meetings, require only 24 hours for the notice of the meeting and the posting of the meeting agenda. There are no allegations with regards to the timing of the posting of notices or agendas of meetings that occurred. Agenda content, unfortunately, Idaho laws is not clear regarding what is required for agenda items. First, Idaho Code does not define what constitutes an agenda for open meeting law. The Idaho Open Meeting Law Manual states an agenda is generally defined as a list of things to be done, and agenda items should be listed with specificity and not buried in a catch-all category such as director's report. Further, an agenda item that requires a vote shall be identified on the agenda as an action item, to provide notice that action may be taken on that item. Agendas may be amended depending on the timing of the amendment and the nature of the amendment. That's number four in 74204. Second, litigation on Idaho open meeting law is scarce and has not clarified the issue regarding what is a sufficient agenda. Further, that the Attorney General's office enforces open meeting law violations, and there are only a couple of the AG opinions on the subject that also do not clarify what is required on the agenda. For example, a 2020 opinion from the Attorney General found that agenda descriptions of action on uptick on COVID cases and COVID-19 response were actually sufficient to put the public on notice that a closure would be voted on. There was other problems in this case with regards to the timing of posting the agendas for the meetings and on the content of the agenda for other matters, but the AG found that the agency cured these errors in a subsequent meeting. So, while the law is not settled on what exactly is required in an agenda, it is clear that an agency can cure. So, curing an allegation of violation of open meeting law, so upon receiving notice, one, the governing body has 14 days to publicly acknowledge an open meeting violation and state its intent to cure the violation. It then has 14 days to cure by declaring the action taken from the meeting in violation of the open meeting law was void. 74208, that's 7A and B. If the board makes such an acknowledgement, it stays all enforcement actions, and such a cure acts as a bar to the imposition of civil penalties. That's 74208, 7C and D. So, my proposal of curing and review of the board actions, so as chair of this board, I always try to work with my fellow trustees within the bounds of the law, and NIC's policies to serve NIC. Under Idaho law, this board is not designed to be a rubber-stamp entity. The college's attorney abruptly resigned, and the board was presented with a resolution to hire an attorney who is trusted and who came forward to undertake the task of being the NIC attorney. The board also has legitimate hiring concerns related to the VP of Instruction and Student Affairs at NIC. Then concerns arose about the president's contract, and our new attorney suggested he investigate the matter. He also recommended we put our president on administrative leave so that the investigation could be done without allegations of interference by the president. These three things, the higher. These three things, the hiring of a new legal counsel, the delay of hiring to the President's cabinet, and the placing of President Swain on administrative leave, were allegedly done in violation of Idaho's open meeting law. With all due caution, this board has the opportunity to recognize and cure such violations, and I personally would like to apologize for them, because these violations were unintentional and good-faith attempts were made to comply with the laws. Claims have been made regarding alleged open meeting violations regarding the content of meeting agendas and serial meetings. Litigation is expensive and time-consuming, and would be a huge distraction from our goal of guiding the colleges to secure accreditation. This board wants to focus on fulfilling the college's mission. So I have prepared to use the magic words required by the statute to cure any violation of open meeting laws. The language absolutely tracks the Attorney General's August 3, 2020 opinion, and this is the verbatim type of language used. So, regarding, moving to agenda item, the next one, which is discussion and vote regarding curing of possible open meeting violation at December 5, 2022, board meeting regarding resolution 2202-03. So, my thoughts on it are this, admittedly, we could have done this better. Whether it's an open meeting law violation or not, I'll leave it to legal minds to debate. To cure it, we need to stipulate that it is a violation, so let's stipulate that and move on. Since the December 5 meeting, I've had some time to think about this more, and my opinion, it is not essential to suspend any policy, to retain Art Mackamore, which was the intended purpose of suspending it. On reflection, that suspension is overbroad and not necessary. I think there is a more surgical way to achieve that desired end of immediately hiring an attorney short of suspending the policy. That is, to hire Mackamore for less than a year for his general representation of the college, and allow time for a proper RFP, at the President's command. As to pending litigation, we may need to accept that and draw a distinction in terms of Mackamore's terms of representation, but the board should leave it to the President to handle those matters. Each member on this board acknowledges NIC's policy suspension is to be avoided at all costs, if possible. Statements, so on December 5, 2022, this board passed resolution 2202-03.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
There's a typo there, and that needs to be 2022-03, and then down below, you'll see it needs to be 2022-04. So unfortunately, there's a little bit of a typo there, so the two and the zero were transposed, and you're inadvertently reading it incorrectly. So it was just a typographical error. Do you see what I'm pointing out, sir?
Oh, I do see. 2022-03.
Yes.
Is this something we need to amend the agenda for?
Uh, Chairman, Art Mackamore, I have a little bit of a minute, and there was a simple transition, and the decision of another member, you know, either 10, 20, or 4, people, and whatnot, and we don't want to, you know, sometimes transpositions happen. This is what you would call a true scrivener's error.
Well, the, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
The two resolutions were properly noticed, were included in the board package, and are attached as tabs three and four, so they are correct in their form. So this is just a reference to that item, but they are in the book correctly, so I would think that Mr. Mackamore is accurately assessing that this is kind of a no-big-deal.
Well, this is referring to the resolution of the December 5 board packet that has been amended to include the contents that was passed at the meeting, after the meeting. So if there's any objection from the crowd, speak up, but, okay. So, referring to the resolution 2022, thank you very much, -03, that was passed on December 5th, I'll go back to my notes. On December 5, 2022, this board passed resolution 2022, thank you, -03, to acknowledge the resignation of Lyons-O'Dowd, to suspend NIC policy 70104 indefinitely, and to immediately hire the Law Office of Arthur B. Mackamore as the NIC attorney. The agenda did not state the substantive purpose of the resolution, thus whether the public had notice of the substantive purpose is unlikely. Also, NIC policy 20103 required a roll-call vote to suspend NIC policy 70104, and none was held. So, I motion that this board recognize that a probable violation of the open meeting laws under Idaho Code Section 74204, Subsection 4, happened on December 5 by the suspension on that date of NIC policy 70104, and by the passage of resolution 2203, and after that, by the acceptance of the resignation of Lyons-O'Dowd, PLLC, and by the hiring of the Law Office of Arthur B. Mackamore, and that this board considers those actions null and void. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Moving to discussion, so, do I need to read the motion again, or does everyone have a Well, you think, oh, so the motion has been moved and seconded, acknowledging the violation of the open meeting laws under Idaho Code Section 74204, Subsection 4, happened on December 5 by the suspension on that date of NIC policy number 70104, and by the passage of resolution 2203, and after that, by the acceptance of the resignation of Lyons-O'Dowd, PLLC, and by the hiring of the Law Office of Arthur B. Mackamore, and that this board considers those actions null and void. Open discussion and considerations.
Mr. Chairman, is a motion necessary on this, or just recognition of the violation?
A motion is necessary.
Okay.
Are you ready to vote?
Uh, I have a question. Accepting the resignation of Mark Lyons, was that truly an error?
That was part of the resolution, so that's why it's included in this motion.
Okay.
So, everything that was moved, that was passed in that resolution on December 5?
As a whole.
As a whole, we're declaring null and void.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll take a roll-call vote, start from left to right. Trustees Zimmerman?
Aye.
Trustee Corkle?
Yes.
I vote aye. Trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Banducci?
Aye.
Okay, there are five ayes, no opposed, motion carries. Moving to the next one, so we're going to accept topic of discussion, accept resignation of legal services. So I have a motion that's prepared, but I prefer to accomplish this with a resolution and the resolution acquisition agenda item, so we're going to move to the next one. So, this was essentially the same policy that was on December 5. We're moving to the resolution and suspension of NIC policy 70104, continuous professional service contracts and new legal counsel. So, this board could pass the same resolution, December 5, but let's not do that. There's a better way, we've had time to think about this, and without objection, we're going to move to the next topic. So that's action discussion, so we're talking about resolution on the acquisition of legal services. So in your board packet, there is a resolution 2203 that titled "Fulfilling the Spirit of NIC Policy and New Legal Counsel." So if you read the policy, it doesn't essentially plan for abrupt resignations of legal counsel, and so I have prepared a motion that I believe fulfilling the spirit of that policy and is not suspending any policy. So I motion that this board pass resolution 2203, and just for clarification, the members of the board have the same resolution that is in the board packet, but there is one minor change from the board packet, where the college is presently under a sanction of warning with the Northwest Colleges, so in the board packet, it has show cause, and so that is the only change from the agenda packet. So, I motion that this board pass resolution 2202-03 titled "Fulfilling the Spirit of NIC Policy and New Legal Counsel." So it would accept the resignations of Lyons-O'Dowd effective November 25, and that NIC hire the Law Office of Arthur B. Mackamore to be the NIC attorney with a retroactive acceptance from December 5, 2022 of his work and fee agreement for a time period controlled by the President, and an RFP be issued and completed within the year. May I have a second? So, just to remind everyone, we are currently essentially without a lawyer, because we declared the December 5 action null and void.
Okay, then I'm going to second the motion, then.
We have a second? So I'm going to announce, the motion has been moved and seconded, that this board pass resolution 2203 titled "Fulfilling the Spirit of NIC Policy and New Legal Counsel", accept the resignation of Lyons-O'Dowd effective November 25, and that NIC hire the Law Office of Arthur B. Mackamore to be the NIC attorney with a retroactive acceptance from December 5, 2022 of his work and fee agreement for a time period controlled by the President, and an RFP be issued and completed within the year.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a second motion on that, or just amend the motion to split this motion in two, and have two separate votes? One to accept the resignation of Lyons-O'Dowd, and one concerning the hiring of Arthur McComber?
We do have, in an interest to comply 100%, is my goal with the open meeting law, we have numerous agenda items, and one of them is to accept the resignation of legal services. So we were on that agenda item, and then I moved this down to two, to the resolution acquisition of legal services?
Right.
We were, I did address that. I did address that I had a motion to do what you're talking about, but I thought it best to proceed with this resolution that we have in the board packet, which would essentially do the same thing.
Well, under discussion here, I can't bring myself to vote for a law firm that is currently being reviewed by the State Bar Association as to whether or not he's.
Please, everyone, this is a business meeting, as much as you may or disagree with that, please respect, that is very hard for us to hear up here, and we want to go home at a reasonable time tonight. So it is actually very hard to hear, and if you keep clapping, it even bothers me. It would be very sad if we have to clear the whole room and let the public watch on Zoom. Nobody wants that. Please, respect my request. It would still comply with the open meeting laws, COVID has proved that. Please, do not, please stop. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, you know, and I would hesitate to vote in favor of hiring him until his issue is resolved with the State Bar, and is determined that he can legitimately practice law in this geographic area.
Would you like to go into executive session and have a discussion with him about that topic?
No, because I don't think it's his decision, it's the State Bar's decision.
Well, I'm sure he's looked into the topic.
Mr. Chair. I'm sure he has, too, but. Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Allow trustee Corkle to either make a motion or not, see if it's seconded or not, and then we can take a vote. And if it's approved, yes, if it's not, then not, and then go back to the original motion and let's have a vote.
That's a wonderful, do you have amendment, a motion to amend, the motion that's on the table right now, sir?
Motion to amend would be to make two separate votes, one to accept the resignation of Lyons-O'Dowd, and a second motion to hire Arthur McComber.
That's a bit of an unfriendly amendment. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Second that and discussion on that topic. I don't have anything to add to that. Does anyone else have anything to add to that request?
I, yes, Chair McKenzie.
Go ahead, Trustees Zimmerman.
Thank you. There have been so many considerations that have come to light since I've gotten to know Art McComber, what little that I have, and I have a lot of reservations about having him represent us as a body, or as a college, or as trustees. I already have very little confidence in him.
Trustees Zimmerman, if you would not bad-mouth personnel.
Okay, so I'll just say this, as I said before, I don't believe he's qualified as a collegiate attorney to represent us. I feel that we have been engaging in on-the-job training, paying $325 while he gets up to speed. He has complained in emails and out loud that Mark Lyons is responsible for him not being able to be competent, and I think his competency lies with himself, and so.
Trustees Zimmerman, I do believe that.
I can't raise these concerns about who we hire for an attorney to represent us and guide us on these very important decisions.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
You know, Trustees Zimmerman, you are certainly open to your opinion, but we're trying to change the precedent of former board members that like to bad-mouth people in public. Your predecessors were famous for that, so if we can try to avoid that as much as possible, it'd be appreciated.
There are different ways to say what you're saying.
Well, I don't think claiming that someone is on-the-job training is all that disparaging when it's a fact.
That would be more of an opinion.
Incompetent would be kind of a slice.
Okay, incompetent might work better, thank you.
I think you used that word already.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question on your amendment.
Mr. Chairman, my concern here is that should the State Bar decide against Mr. McComber, then any legal advice we would have taken from him, or action that we would have taken on his recommendation, might be null and void, and that's too big of a risk to take.
That is why we're leaving his tenure up to the President of the college. So, I'm going to call the question on your friend, I'm going to call it an unfriendly amendment, respectfully, and let's take all those in favor of amending my motion that I've proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Are they amending it? Aye.
I hear two ayes, trustee Zimmerman, trustee Corkle, hopefully that works for the minutes recording, I'm recording the names, and all those in opposition, say nay.
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 And the Chair votes nay, so the motion fails. That would be trustee Banducci, trustee Wagner, and trustee McKenzie who vote nay. So, back to the original motion on the table, we have a motion, and I shall restate that motion. The motion that this board pass resolution 2203, forgive me, 2022-03 titled "Fulfilling the Spirit of NIC Policy and New Legal Counsel", accept the resignation of Lyons-O'Dowd effective November 25, and that NIC hire the Law Office of Arthur B. Mackamore to be the NIC attorney with a retroactive acceptance from December 5, 2022 of his work and fee agreement for a time period controlled by the President, and an RFP be issued and completed within the year. So, is there any further discussion? I'm ready to call the question.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, okay. All those in favor of the motion passing, say aye.
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 Trustees Banducci, trustee Wagners, take their turn, saying aye. All those in oppose, say nay.
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 Trustees Zimmerman, trustee Corkle, saying nay. The Chair votes aye, the motion passes. Okay, the motion passes three to two. We're on to the action discussion of discussion and vote regarding curing of the possible open meeting violation at December 5, 2022, at the board meeting regarding resolution So on the December 5, 2022, this board passed resolution 2022-04 to delay the hiring of vice presidents, provosts, deans, and other members of the President's council to allow the Board of Trustees to review of all potential hires into those positions. The agenda did not state the substantive purpose of the resolution and suspending policies required a roll-call vote, thus whether the public had notice of the substantive purpose is unlikely. And, forgive me, if I had the Senate meeting minutes, they gave one other justification. And forgive me, if I had the Senate meeting minutes, they gave one other justification for related to suspending policies that I thought was quite relevant. So I motion that this board recognize that a probable violation of the open meeting laws under Idaho Code section seventy-four two oh four subsection four happened on December fifth, that we acknowledge the violation by the passage of resolution twenty-two twenty twenty-two dash oh four and the motion to delay hiring into the president's cabinet without the suspension of applicable parts of policy two oh two oh one related to hiring and that this board cure that violation and declare these actions null and void. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Banducci seconded. So just for all clarity, the motion has been moved and seconded that this board recognized and acknowledged the violation of the open meeting laws under Idaho Code section seventy-four two oh four subsection four happened on December fifth by the passage of resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four and the motion to delay hiring into the president's cabinet without the suspension of applicable parts of policy two oh two oh one related to hiring and that this board cure that violation and declare those actions null and void. So we're open to discussion and consideration. Okay, I'm ready to call a question. So those in favor of passing my motion and acknowledging the violation, say aye.
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 There are four ayes, everyone votes aye, and the chair even votes aye. So there is five oh vote.
Is that, is that, Mr. Chair, is that a roll call vote? Are we acknowledging that? Is that a roll call vote by everybody? So it's.
We'll just do a roll call vote, just to, just to be careful. Zimmerman, you vote. Trustee Zimmerman, you say?
Aye.
Trustee Corkle, you say?
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie says aye. Trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Banducci?
Aye.
The motion passes five oh. So this board, it is agended item just like it was December fifth for a resolution implementing of the president cabinet hiring freeze. Forgive me. So I would argue that we don't need to suspend and time is now even more important. That accreditation number five is permit the presidency to fill all vacant senior administration positions immediately. So and that's eligibility requirements and standards and even the preamble. So I am working towards consensus within the existing framework we have with the goal of not suspending any policies. So that's how I've planned for this meeting. So this test difficulty is compounded because some concerns related to sensitive personnel matters. So having met an executive session on December eighth and listening to my fellow trustees, I believe there is a much better way than the resolution actions taken on December fifth. So we're, it was our actions December fifth are null and void. There is no president's cabinet's hiring freeze and we're moving to the next action agenda item. So there's a discussion, action discussion, a discussion and vote regarding curing of possible, forgive me, let me just get my check. So discussion and vote regarding curing of possible open meeting violation at December eighth, board meeting regarding the action taking regarding Dr. Sivoli without declaring an emergency. So acting on an amended, amended agenda item required an emergency declaration and we did not state the emergency at the meeting for the minutes. So I've prepared a motion. I motion that this board recognize that a probable, acknowledge that violation of the open meeting laws under Idaho Code section seventy-four two oh four subsection four happened on December eighth by the passage of a motion to have the college's attorney and Chair McKenzie contact former President Sivoli to see whether he would consider becoming active, acting president of NIC for an unknown amount of time and that this board cure that violation and declare those actions null and void. May I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Wagner seconds it, thank you. So the motion has moved and seconded and I shall read it again. That this board recognize that a, acknowledged the violation of the open meeting laws under Idaho Code section seventy-four two oh four subsection four happened on December eighth by the passage of a motion to have the college's attorney and Chair McKenzie contact former President Sivoli to see whether he could consider becoming acting president of NIC for an unknown amount of time and that this board cure that violation and declare those actions null and void. So we're open to discussions and considerations and I'll start the topic. So one of the things that I've learned as being chair is you can amend an agenda, you can amend an agenda at the beginning, you can amend it, and if you were to amend an agenda mid-meeting and you were, you're able to have discussion on that, but if you were to act on an amended agenda item, you need to state the declaration of emergency, which we failed to do at that meeting. And so for that reason, it is an open meeting violation as we've acknowledged in the motion. So is there any other discussion or are we ready to call for a vote? Okay. Those in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Forgive me, we're going to do a roll call vote, thank you. Trustee Zimmerman.
Aye.
Trustee Corkle, say aye. Trustee McKenzie says aye, and trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Banducci?
Aye.
Okay, does, going back to the first open meeting violation, with, is the meeting minutes satisfied enough? I believe we have an identification of the roll call votes for the first motion to, to pass that. Does that, does that make sense? I don't know, I'll have to look at the meeting minutes and maybe our attorney can get back to me. Okay, so that was Sivoli. So we're on to the next.
Chair, Chair McKenzie, which one are you referring to?
Well, we've taken roll call votes for all but the first one, and I do believe I read out the minutes, for the minutes, the names of the votes for the first motion of the open meeting violation.
I think if you're in doubt, I think you could circle back and redo that vote if we, if you feel it's necessary, just to be sure.
You know, with all.
Mr. Chairman, my notes show there was a, I believe it was the motion to cure the initial resolution on legal counsel twenty twenty-two dash zero three, and my notes show trustee Banducci seconded it, and Mr. Corkle made a motion or during discussion, there was discussion of it, and then I show trustee Zimmerman voted yes, trustee Corkle voted yes, and you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Wagner, and trustee Banducci all voted aye. And so it was a five zero vote.
Yes.
And so I think that satisfies it. The cure stated in the statute does not require a roll call vote, but I appreciate your, your care in taking it anyway. I believe that accords well with trustee Zimmerman's concern that votes be tabulated properly and publicly, and so I think you're on the right track and circling back to that motion is not needed.
Okay, thank you, especially if it's unanimous, I would feel much better about that. Appreciate the backup. Going down to action discussion, discussion and vote regarding curing of possible open meeting violation at December eighth, twenty twenty-two, the board meeting regarding action taking regarding Dr. Swain on amended agenda item without declaring an emergency. So this is similar to discussion of the prior one and I have a motion prepared if I can get to my notes. I'll just set the stage and the statement as I've prepared it. So on December eighth, twenty twenty-two, this board passed a motion on the recommendation of the college's attorney to put Dr. Swain on administrative leave to protect him from charges of interference with investigations to be done by the college's attorney in the certain aspects of Dr. Swain's contract. The notice agenda did not state this as an action item on the agenda, thus whether the public had notice of the substantive purpose is unlikely. Additionally, the agenda was amended and for the board to have acted on the amended item, it must declare an emergency, which was not declared for the minutes. Also, NIC policy two zero one zero three required a roll call vote to suspend applicable parts of policy two zero two zero one and none was held. I motion that this board recognize that and acknowledge the violation of the open meeting laws, of the open meeting laws under Idaho Code section seventy-four two oh four subsection four happened on December eighth by the passage of a motion to put President Swain on protective administrative leave to facilitate investigations into his employment contract without the suspension of applicable parts of policy two zero two zero one related to presidential authority and that this board cure that violation and declare those actions null and void. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Trustee Corkle seconds it, thank you. I shall state, the motion has been moved and seconded and I shall read it again, that this board acknowledged the violation of the open meeting law under Idaho Code section seventy-four two oh four subsection four happened on December eighth by the passage of a motion to put President Swain on protective administrative leave to facilitate investigations into his employment contract without the suspension of applicable parts of policy two zero two zero one related to presidential authority and that this board cure that violation and declare those actions null and void. I'm prepared to take a vote if there's any objection. Trustee Zimmerman, you vote?
I'm ready to vote.
What would your vote be?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Corkle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Banducci?
Aye.
That'd be five oh, the motion passes. President Swain is off administrative leave and that is null and void. So moving to the next action discussion, president's contract, Swain administrative leave. So I motion that this board place Dr. Swain on administrative leave effective immediately to protect him from charges of interference with the college's attorney's investigations into President Swain's employment contract, which investigations are to be immediately implemented with NIC co-lead assistance and the college attorney shall send a letter to Dr. Swain regarding conditions of such leave, and after those investigations, the college attorney shall issue an attorney-client privilege report to the board's consideration. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Trustee Banducci seconds it. So the motion has been moved and seconded and I shall repeat it, that the board place Dr. Swain on administrative leave effective immediately to protect him from charges of interference with the college's attorney's investigation into President Swain's employment contract, which investigations are to be immediately implemented with NIC co-lead assistance and the college attorney shall send a letter to Dr. Swain regarding conditions of such leave. After those investigations, the college attorney shall issue an attorney-client privilege report for the board's consideration. So it is.
Under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Corkle.
Could somebody please give me the exact specific reason he's going on administrative leave?
It's stated in the motion, sir.
What, to interfere with what? I mean, there's an investigation, an investigation into what?
So if you read the board conduct policy, basically.
Mr. Chair.
Come on, folks, please.
Trustee Banducci.
Mr. Chair, you need to be very careful with this discussion outside of executive session.
That is, that is very true.
It's a personnel matter.
Yep. That is, that is.
This, I think we're where we can be outside of executive session.
That is, that is true.
So there's no answer to it?
I'll happy, we can go into executive session, it's agended for this, for this meeting if you would like to, sir.
Chair McKenzie.
Trustee Zimmerman.
I understand that this is regarding the contract, not the personnel, so I don't understand why we can't have a clearer understanding of what is it about the contract that's going to be investigated? Why does it need to be investigated? How long is this investigation going to take place?
So, again, I defer to the same.
It's a contract, not, we're not talking about the person, we're talking about the contract.
I think that's as far as you can go in open session, sir.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question. So we're going to take a roll call vote.
Wait, did I, so there's no discussion? We're just going to call for the question?
You had your discussion, trustee Zimmerman, and some things cannot be discussed in this session.
Well, I asked a question.
It is amended, we have an agenda item to go into executive session to, to discuss personnel matters if you would like.
It's not a personnel matter, it's a contract issue. And I asked a question about a contract issue.
Okay, well, that's trustee Zimmerman, I'm the chair, I'm calling for the vote. Trustee Zimmerman, your vote, please?
No.
No, that'd be a nay. Trustee Corkle?
No.
All right, trustee McKenzie, I vote aye. Trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Banducci?
I vote aye.
Vote aye. The motion passes. Those in, three to two, the motion carries. So action discussion of Swain lawsuit. Trustee, Art Attorney Macamore, we did not go into executive session earlier, so this was reserved as a backup. Could you modify your statement to be appropriate for public statement, or public open session?
Yes, sir, I can. The lawsuit itself has been filed with the First District Court last Friday, December sixteen, and the, the claims are basically that Dr. Swain believes that the board does not have power to put him on administrative leave, except for certain conditions, and number two, he requests the court order NIC to take him off administrative leave. As far as I know, as of today in speaking with Ms. Garcia, the lawsuit is, the lawsuit is by Dr. Swain and is against NIC, so it's, it's against the institution. The institution has not been served yet, and so once the, the college is served, then the college will have twenty-one days to answer. We will promptly get the, the college's insurance involved as we do with any lawsuit, and then we'll need to address it and take it from there. That's about all that I can say outside of executive session.
Thank you, sir. Without objection, we're moving. So I'm going to, we have executive session that was just offered moments ago that was thought not needed, so I'm going to move to the next action discussion interim president selection in contract. So through attorney-client privilege, our attorney has negotiated with an interim president before us, and I have prepared a motion for this matter. Forgive me. And so to start out, I motion that the board accept, I motion that the board act to accept the negotiated contract of Dr. South for the interim president position as defined in the contract, and may I have a second?
I will second that.
Trustee Banducci seconds it and it's open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I've read the contract, I believe it's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I think there's a thirty-five thousand dollar signing bonus.
It is.
I think there's twenty-seven thousand dollar moving allowance. I think there's a three thousand dollar a month housing allowance on this.
Yes.
We already have a president, why are we hiring another one?
The reason why.
And furthermore, and furthermore, we have two acting presidents right now that are doing the job. There's no reason to be paying the salary this high for two presidents. This is an irresponsible use of the taxpayer dollar.
Thank you, sir. So, excuse me, as much as you agree or disagree, we please ask that you let us do our business. So, sir, the, the situation that we have right now with the two co-leads was blessed by the accreditation agency, at least as I understand, but only on a temporary basis, sir. And if you look at the accreditation requirements, recommendations, it is to have a acting, a president at the helm, and that is the board's main point of contact, main interface, only interface, and so this is essential for NIC that we have a candidate for president as such, and I've spoken with Dr. South, the community, words can't describe that in this, in this predicament that we have such a qualified interim person to steer the ship through this trying time.
This is another instance where I haven't even seen this man's resume. I don't even know where he lives, you know, and. You know, and, and this is coming before me right now with, with no more information than this? This is not right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the, the resume was handed out at the, I believe it was the last meeting, the December ten meeting, it might have been December eight, but it was, the full resume was handed out prior.
Yeah. So, I call for...
Chair McKenzie?
Trustee Zimmerman?
I have several, several things here that disturb me. You know, I think our community really, really wants transparency. All the people here this evening seem to voice that as well, and this has not been done with transparency. We were provided with one candidate, rather than a few to choose from. I think that would have offered more transparency. This is, the contract is fiscally irresponsible, we do not know how long this person will be in the role, and Gregory South, I understand he was employed here for a short time, but that was discontinued. I would like to know why was his employment not continued? I believe the fall of twenty twenty-one, and he, he did not continue his employment here, so what was the reason? And is he currently employed right now?
Mr. Chair, if there is a request by Ms. Zimmerman to go to executive session, that would be appropriate.
That would be the intent. Trustee Zimmerman, this would be one more example of a topic that would be respective for executive session.
Call for the vote.
So, I call for the vote. Trustee Zimmerman? Your vote, please?
Vote on what?
The, the motion on the table. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, and no is my answer.
No. Trustee Corkle?
No.
Trustee McKenzie votes aye. Trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Banducci?
Aye.
All right. President South, congratulations. So, moving to the next action discussion, waiving of attorney-client privilege for previous documents. So, this is another example where I would love board swift action, but I'm referring to the matter to the CEO, the president, interim president in this scenario, to make the decision, but I express my desire for the community to understand, from my perspective, having read privileged documents that are provided through attorney-client privilege and shared with us in executive session. We are supposed to consider stakeholders, and they pass votes of no confidence over the years several times. To me, this is, this agenda item is, is my attempt to respond in a way to help mutual understanding, but I cannot unilaterally waive this attorney-client privilege, and there's many concerns part of it. So, I've shared with trustee Getty, the appointed trustee before the election, a lot of information regarding our activities with ICrimp, and he, he admitted he was unaware to the extent of our cooperation, and the narrative in the quarterly press is wildly inaccurate from a year ago. It is. Oddly, trustee Getty and Chair Wold, I don't mean this in the negative, but, but they went to ICrimp to ask to stay with their services, and still didn't even know the whole story because I was having a conversation with them in August, and this happened in June. Additionally, their, their June presentation to ICrimp, I would even consider as one more example of board involvement in operations that is inappropriate, and I feel the CEO should have, should have handled the matter. So, I wish the prior trustees fulfilled my information request, so I may have assisted them.
Can some of you exercise no self-control?
Trustee Banducci, please.
Chair McKenzie?
I have something I'd like to say. Community, this is a meeting held in public, this is not a meeting for the public to interfere with our meeting. So respectfully, it is very disturbing, and it's not, I can, I can continue with business, but I do care about other trustees who is drastically negatively affecting them, so for reasons. So, trustee Banducci, hopefully you will not address the crowd, and we can move forward.
No, I just want to share a piece of information. As you're discussing ICrimp, and there's been folks that have been talking about the insurance policies, and, and again, it's about people not having all the information and not having all the knowledge. One of the things I tried to get out as board chair was that we had a very significant claim that has created more challenges than anything, and it's on the property and casualty side, not on the liability side, because of the tremendous windstorm we had. If you were to take our claims, about sixty percent of our claims were just that windstorm. So, it's very disingenuous to try to say other things were the cause for our insurance trouble, when the windstorm was a major factor, and it was a significant claim, and that was the underpinning of ICrimp not re-upping us and dropping us. So, again, it's very disingenuous and inaccurate to try to point the picture at other things, and the press tried to kind of gloss over that, but then he said, oh, but we did have a big claim here. So, people need to understand that they don't have all the information, and that it's a process, and they, sometimes they just have to understand we're doing what we, what we can, and working with the insurance and with the...
Yeah, and trustee Banducci, actually, of the two documents that I'm gonna refer to the president and to, is actually, to summarize it, is you're wanting to say something regarding the matter, and legal counsel essentially saying, no, be quiet. Sometimes it's best to just not say anything. And, so, as a trustee, there's many things I want to say and end up not. So, going back to, I just wish prior information requests were fulfilled, and I wish for this board to proceed with prudence on all legal matters, and they just take time. So, I believe, given from a trustee perspective, the past couple of years would make much more sense, which is my motive for doing this. So, to be clear, I am making a motion, but it's, it's not releasing attorney-client privilege, and that's not what we're voting on. I'm just motioning to work, my motion is this, to work with the CEO in conjunction, to work with the CEO in conjunction with legal counsel with a recommendation concerning the two documents as a partial response from the board to the votes of no confidence. May I have a second? If people are tired, we can pick this up in the future.
Can you say that again, please?
I motion to work with the CEO in conjunction with legal counsel with a recommendation concerning, to make a recommendation concerning the two documents as a partial response from the board to the votes of no confidence. Would you like me to read it one more time?
What are the two?
What we're trying to figure out is what can we say? People want us to answer, and we're limited by what we can say. And as chair, I worked with ICrimp almost on a daily basis for months, and people don't understand that we're not allowed to say anything. So, when the press tries to say that you don't respond, when you didn't even get asked, but then when you do, and you say, well, I can't respond, then it's a problem.
I would even say, it relates even to accreditation, because if you look at the letter of warning, that's saying that you're not authentically considered, the votes of no confidence. I'm trying to come up with a way of, see it from my perspective, and trying, trying to show that, that I actually have considered, but...
Chair?
Trustee Wagner?
So, what you're saying is you want to say more, but you need permission to do so, essentially?
True. As a trustee, if I were to come out, thankfully, trust, yes, if I were to come out and essentially disparage personnel, it does expose the college to additional liability, and so, if, if I make a statement that could be perceived as that, then, then, yes, you could just be sued. And so, I write some statements, in trustee Banducci's example, he, he wrote a statement, shared it with legal counsel, and legal counsel came back and said, maybe not. And so, out of the best interest of the college, just move forward.
And this discretion would be up to you?
Up to the CEO, in conjunction with legal counsel, and it would be a recommendation before the board concerning the two documents as a partial response from the board to the votes of no confidence. And it's really just helping, asking the CEO for helping of how to authentically consider and respond to the communities who've reached out to us. So, I'll, I'll read my motion again, and hopefully we can have a second, move forward, and end the night. So, to motion to work with the CEO in conjunction with legal counsel with a recommendation concerning the two documents as a partial response from the board to the votes of no confidence. May I have a second, or should we move forward?
I can second that.
Thank you, sir. We've had plenty of discussion on the topic, I'm prepared to call for a vote unless there's objection. Okay, let's call for the vote. We'll just do a roll call vote, as habit seems to go well. Trustee Zimmerman, how, how do you vote in this scenario? Do you understand what we're voting on, or...
I was going to ask you to be more specific about the two documents.
If I may ask, it was the two documents that were read tonight, is that correct?
There were four votes of no confidence.
No, 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 these are, these are two legal documents, I'm sure the president will, would, would share them with you.
When, when were these documents written?
A year ago. There you go. October.
I'd have to abstain on this, because I, I'm not familiar with...
That, that's fine.
I'm abstaining as well. There's not enough information here.
Okay, I respect that. And I'll vote aye, because I'm familiar with them. Then, it's basically the responses from ICrimp.
I will vote aye. I'd like us to be able to release more information.
Trustee Wagner, you're welcome to abstain.
I would vote aye, too.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate that, that the motion passes with three to zero. So, I appreciate your trust, and at least your interest in trying to respond to the votes of no confidence, and then again, it's still a recommendation, it's still coming back to the board out of respect from the president and what they think is best. So, we're trying to work in harmony in this, as this. Okay. Onto, we only have, wow, five more agenda items. Congratulations, everyone, on your marathon night. Okay, so, I, I've actually prepared some censors that I've drafted here of myself, actually, and trustee Zimmerman, because, but, in the interest of trying to move beyond the post-election heat, and I want to make that commitment, that to work together for the good of the college, I prepared these censors that haven't been in the board packet, but, but my feeling is, we came out of the heat of an election, and we need to act together as board, as a team, with our CEO. We need to change gears and downshift, and I am thankful we have legal assistants that are supporting, supportive of all of this. Let's be mindful and not allow unprofessionalism in our board meetings. We desire to put the students first, the college first, and the mission first. So, so, I was planning, in preparation for this board meeting, so I was planning, and I even drafted them, but mainly, I just want to say, sorry. Mainly, I just want to say heartfelt apology for my mistakes, and especially for my foul language at prior board meetings, where I allowed my emotions to overtake me, and I lacked professionalism. So, I pledge to hold myself and the board to a high standard of respect and professionalism, and I would expect the same from all of us. So, just consider that. So, moving to the next action discussion item, the attorney, Idaho Attorney General, the open meeting law training. So, if you notice, this meeting agenda was quite detailed, and that interest is to comply as best I can with the spirit of the Idaho open meeting laws. Just for an example, off the cuff, if you see the action discussion, NIC's athletic sports at the bottom of our agenda meeting, I'll just go there for communities. Like I said, in the learning of open meeting laws and how best to comply, is it sufficient to just put NIC's athletic sports that we're taking action on out of the interest to inform the community of preparation for the meeting, on what to expect, and how important it is? It's my intention to provide as much detail in the agenda items and the board packets as possible. So, that's my reasoning of putting in, initially, the, the topic to start is NIC's athletic sports, having a conversation on conference change, and then as preparation for this meeting, other motions started being discussed in preparation, and I was like, well, let's put that in the open meeting so people know how to prepare, like I said, and, and know how to show up. So, back to my notes, nobody, nobody wants these errors to happen again, or even in the first place. They were unintentional, and I, so I motion, I'm making a motion here, to direct the CEO to coordinate training with Attorney General's office as soon as the AG's office time and priorities permits. So, we're, a lot of training headed our way, I'll just describe that, but, but I am making a motion for that, and if it goes to discussion, I have more to say. Trustee Banducci?
Chair McKenzie, I would second it, and I would like to share a thought with that second, if I may.
You may.
There may be a target of opportunity, depending on the availability of the trustees. Normally, in January, for Education Week, the trustees go down and support the senior staff of the college down there, and we brief J.FAC and the Senate and House Education Committees and that sort of thing. If we were down there for a couple, three days as normal, maybe that's the sort of training that we could set up to correspond to that trip, and we could accomplish both things at the same time. That might be a, a target of, of opportunity. And, and for the other two trustees, it's usually like the last week of January, so I don't know what your schedules look like, and we haven't seen yet what that looks like down in Boise that I'm aware of. Shannon usually makes us aware of that as soon as she gets it on the, gets a tickler on that, or sees it. But that might be a type of training we could do while we're already down there. The other thing we do, in addition to the House and Senate Edge Committees, J.FAC, we meet with some of our local representatives while we're down there, and then other opportunities to meet with folks down there, network. But that might be a time to get the training in, too.
No, I think that's a great recommendation.
I'm hearing we're, we're talking about the timing. I'd just like to go back and emphasize, this, I've been here two and a half weeks, and I've read the open meetings law manual three times, and there's a lot there, and I'd sure like to get this done as soon as we could. It's important.
I'll say that I've taken a good hard look at the AG guidance manual, and that's some of the reasons we're doing what we are today. So, I, I feel all of us would benefit from the training on the subject matter, and I recommend that's what we do. I, myself, felt a little at sea with the last board, and I think all of us would benefit from having a baseline understanding of how to conduct open meetings. Hold on. So, Todd, I, I do believe your dates are a bit off, but we'll leave that to the CEO to coordinate.
Yeah, it could be the third or fourth week of January, it's the latter part of January.
Again, Todd, we'll, we'll leave it to the CEO to coordinate. I'm sure that...
No, I was just mentioning that might be a target of opportunity.
Yes, I do. So, it is a motion, and I'll state it again, and we have a second, so I'll state that. The motion is to direct the CEO to coordinate training from the AG's office as soon as the AG's office's times and priorities permits. So, again, that's to the CEO to coordinate, and I'm sure they'll be communicating back to each of us on what's best.
Mr. Chair.
Call for the question. Trustee Banducci?
One last, one piece of discussion. Laura Rumppler just sent me the information.
Said your dates are wrong.
Yeah, it's the week of January twenty-third, and we're scheduled for J.FAC on the twenty-sixth of January.
So, along those dates, I'm sure that will be coming out soon. Call for the vote. Trustee Zimmerman?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Trustee Corkle?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie says aye, or, sure. Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Banducci?
Yes, aye.
Five oh, excellent. The motion passes. That felt great. Okay, moving to action discussion, NIC's athletic sports, athletic sports, so, related to the athletic participation in the conference change, I'm gonna put a motion before us, and second and discussion. So, so I'm gonna motion, I think, I motion the board thinks it's advantageous for the college to go back to the NJCAA for athletics, and directs the president to assess if this is feasible and reasonable, and in the best interest of the college, and if his recommendation is to move back to NJCAA, then no further board action is needed to support this direction. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion... Okay, we have a motion. Trustee Corkle has seconded it, thank you very much, and I'm going to restate the motion that's before the table. And I motion that the board thinks it is advantageous for the college to go back to NJCAA for athletics and directs the president to assess if this is feasible and reasonable and in the best interest of the college. And if his recommendation, or his or her, forgive me, is to move back to NJCAA, then no further board action is needed to support this direction.
Chair McKenzie.
Trustee Zimmerman.
I don't have any information on what financial impact that would have on the college, and as trustees, I think that that's something we should consider, so can you kind of give me some idea about that?
Well, that's interesting, because it seemed like you had an opinion on the campaign trail.
No, I'm not sure.
No, no, no. Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
What we can do, trustee Zimmerman, is there was a feasibility study done, and maybe we can see if we can get you a copy of that, or maybe I can loan you mine to look at it. I think that would be helpful.
Trustee Corkle.
I believe, now the women's wrestling and the coaches, are those two issues that have been discussed over the past months or years?
No, and they're coming up at the next agenda item.
I know, I know, I know. I just wanted-
I do believe, actually, women's wrestling has been talked about. Definitely one meeting, I can guarantee that one, and I want to even argue two, because it's been trustee Banducci's interest in that topic.
So did these two issues come from the board, or did they come from the staff? The faculty?
It would be-
Trustee Banducci.
Trustee Corkle, I would, first off, I asked to add these two agenda items. Secondly, I would say staff, coaches have been talked to, Booster Club has been talked to, so there's been-
Community, please be quiet.
Well, I am being honest. The head wrestling coach, Derek Booth, fully supports women's wrestling being added, and I wasn't going to say that, but it's the truth. And we just, so, but you're missing the point here, and wait till we get to the agenda items, please. So I'm just trying to answer the question.
No, the only reason I say this-
There have been conversations, yes or, and over a couple, three years.
That's all I wanted to know.
That goes all the way back to when assistant coach Carrie Stanley was here, and I have the paperwork from the feasibility study that he did, showed the colleges, the costs. I have quite a bit of documentation that goes all the way back when Mr. Stanley was our assistant coach.
I actually have some words, if I may share. So this is a revisited topic from June 22 of this year, so months ago, half in June of this year, for a conference affiliation change. So this has been contemplated for years. Ever since I got elected, I've been heard from the community of go back to what they call Nationals, which is there's the Northwest Athletic Conference and the National Junior, NJCAA, Junior College Athletic Association. Forgive me, where's my notes? And information regarding sports conferences have been sought after, a lot by trustee Banducci, I'll name regularly, and it was actually even requested of the board that was at the time for Dr. Sabaly to go to the two conferences and see if we can move some sports over or something like that. And for the community, to get to know me, anyone who knows me and my natural interests, they lie elsewhere from sports. Yet, listen to me, during my time here, I have learned and listened to many voices on campus. I have learned a lot regarding NIC's athletic conference alignment, and I've generated the opinion NIC should perhaps be in a conference that better aligns with NIC's athletic goals and offers enhanced opportunities for our student athletes. In consideration of the level of athletic funding that trustee Zimmerman referenced to, NIC is a stark outlier in the NWA, like, big difference. The board wants what is best for the school, and let's have this new president assess if moving to NJCAA conference is, which is best for the school. I think it, I'll state my opinion, that I think it would align more with our funding levels that we're doing already. So in my opinion, changing sports conferences aligns, alignment may be the wisest decision for NIC. NIC needs to increase enrollment, or we will have troubles in other categories that accreditation is monitoring, and athletics has proven to be a student generator. So the move to NWA in the history, so just so the community knows, we were in the NJCAA, and I believe it was about six years ago, maybe somebody can correct me if I-
Eight.
Eight years ago, thank you. The move to NWA was premised on, it was saving money. When that proved to be inaccurate, in fact, it has proven to be even a larger drain on resources because of the way scholarship fundings and the amount of students that are being brought in. With this change back to NJCAA, the justification, so with the change of the athletic conference to NWA, the justification eventually switched to what they're telling me, to be more classroom, classroom seat time for student athletes. Since the savings, since the cost savings didn't realize, another reason was come up with on why we're still in NWA. At least that's what I was told. So in consideration of the prior administration's difficult to follow and inconsistent rationale for the reasons related to athletic conference, I am just merely requesting that NIC examine conference alignment. So NIC has a wonderful legacy and rich history with athletics, and offering NIC students the most potential to succeed, I think should be the focus. So going back to what we're topping, the tabling, my motion that the board thinks it's advantageous for the college to go back to NJCAA for athletics and directs the president to assess if this is feasible and reasonable and in the best interest of the college, and if his recommendation, his or her recommendation is to move back to NJCAA, then no further board action is needed to support this direction.
Chair McKenzie.
Trustee Zimmerman.
I am a sports advocate. I find it to be very, of high value to a student, and I'm not necessarily opposed to making any changes. But I have to say, especially thinking about the wonderful legacy that NIC has, it's hard to consider thinking in the future with what we're facing with accreditation and the letter that we just got on Saturday. I was surprised that it was kept on the agenda when we have so many other things to work out.
There are many things this college can handle. Okay, is there any discussion? Trustee Wagner, you look like you want to say.
Is there some urgency for this, or is it something that can be done in the middle of the year, or what is the, what's the situation?
I'm aware that there's two options. I think we can pretty much do it immediately. I think there's a January 6 deadline, maybe a early February deadline, or we can do it a year from now. Then again, we're not directing, let me be clear, we are not directing the move to NJCAA as a board. What we're doing is saying, if the president thinks that the board, we are expressing an opinion that the board thinks it's advantageous for the college to go back to NJCAA for athletics, and then we're, we are directing the president to assess if it is feasible and reasonable and in the best interest of the college, sorry, I guess there's three. And if this recommendation is, his or her recommendation is to move back to NJCAA, then no further board action is needed to support this direction. So I will provide history, before it was a board decision to go from NJCAA to NWA, and we're basically saying that we support our president's recommendation if we were to go back to Nationals. So, in translation.
One more comment.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Thank you. Would it not be better for a permanent president to make that recommendation on an interim?
In an ideal situations, I think you have an agreement, but we have the situation at hand that we're dealing with, and we're trying to make the best for the college and move forward. So call for the question unless anyone votes. I'm going to-
One more comment.
Trustee Corkle.
I'm not trying to drag this out or anything, but these are three topics that I don't know much about.
We're only topping, talking about one right now.
We're only talking about one right now, but there's two more right after it, you know?
Yes.
And I, you know, I'm just uncomfortable voting on this. I mean, go ahead and call for the question, but that'll probably be how I react.
Just not to, sorry to put you on the spot, I do mean to be cooperative in this question, but I was under the impression that, I thought you both even campaigned to go back to the Nationals. Am I wrong with that assessment?
No, no, I never mentioned NJCAA. I never mentioned that once.
I did not either.
You never mentioned that?
I mentioned strong support for athletics.
Okay.
And the memory of attending basketball games here, and my support for the wrestling department and the coach that came from Kellogg, his name was Pat Whitman?
Whitcomb.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I supported him in his bid for the Olympics.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about trustee Zimmerman? Did you go to the Booster Club and communicate to them that you're interested, or not?
I heard, I did hear from some of the people at the Booster Club, and several of them did talk about moving to a different conference. As I said, I'm not opposed to that. I do think a permanent president should be making the decision, and I'm more concerned about accreditation, and so that's, yeah, that's where I am.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're going to call for the question. Trustee Zimmerman.
Call for the vote.
I'll vote no for now. So no.
No. Trustee Corkle?
I'll abstain for now.
Abstain. Trustee Wagner? Would you like me to rephrase the motion for you, sir, just so you understand?
No. I think I'll vote aye, because my understanding and the discussions I've had before I was a trustee lead me to believe that this is a strong advantage for the school and that there is a time constraint. And you're asking for evaluating it, you're not directing him to do it, so it's up to the president.
It is up to the president, yes.
So I'm going to vote aye, because I'd like to see it. Go ahead.
I will vote aye.
Vote aye. So we have one nay, one abstain, two ayes, and the chair votes aye. So the motion passes, and it is up to the president.
Mr. Chair, my notes don't reflect who gave the second on that. Do you have it in your notes?
I believe, if I recall, it was trustee Banducci.
No, I believe that was trustee Corkle.
Yeah, actually, it was.
What was that now?
You did second my motion for to go to discussion.
I did second that for the sake of discussion, I did, yes.
Yes.
Which I did appreciate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Then trustee, trustee Corkle, I had a friend go to, anyway, that's fine. Where are we? NIC's athletic sports, add women's wrestling. So I think-
I'm ready.
Are you, may I? Trustee Banducci.
Thank you. I'm sure people are expecting one thing, but that's not what they're going to get. And I, and I did want to answer you earlier, Brad, so I was a little stronger in even talking about, talking to the coaches and those sorts of things. I don't want to, I didn't want to prejudice this, and I don't want to, we're not directing, and I'm not going to make a motion that says we have to add anything. My motion is, and so I don't want anybody to have any bias here, and I guess it doesn't hurt to say the coach likes it, the idea, but, so here's the motion I'm going to put together. I motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding adding women's wrestling for the 2023-2024 season, and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. So I want to put it in the hands of our CEO in concert with wrestling coaches, Derek and Cooper, and other leadership, the athletic director, and they think, again, this is something that makes sense. Anecdotally, I think we're going to see 30, 40 young ladies that'll jump right in this. We're, I want to share a little bit of information.
Before you get too far.
Oh, I need a second, I'm sorry, I guess, then I'll finish.
Do you have your motion written down that you may can hand me a piece of paper, or?
I do, actually.
I love that. Thank you.
It's actually rather, that was a rather simple motion. The motion itself is just, I motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding adding women's wrestling for the 2023-2024 season, and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. And if I could have a second, I would like to-
I shall second it, so you get to discussion.
Thank you. Take the liberty as my motion to share a little bit. This addition has the purpose of meeting the unmet needs and interests of both current, future, and potential female wrestlers in the inland northwest. It is a sanctioned high school sport in most states nationally, including Idaho and the surrounding states, Washington, Oregon, et cetera. It is the fastest growing collegiate sport with many colleges now offering it at the Division One, Two, Three, and NAIA level, and at the Juco level. It is also an Olympic sport. Women's freestyle has been competitively competed at the last number of Olympics, and they've done, they've done tremendously well. We have had a number of gold, silver, and bronze medalists. It's, they've done fantastic. I would encourage that we look at this as quickly as possible, if we can do it for that year. We would need to get a head coach so that they would have the ability to try to identify and build a team, to get out there to see, while the wrestling seasons are still going, they end in the latter part of February, and they, and then there may be some that we may want to get to the college and start in the summer term. And again, I have spoken with some of the stakeholders on this, and there's a lot of support at the Booster Club level, within the wrestling program on campus. But again, it needs to be evaluated by our president, and if it makes sense, and again, I think it's a, it's a multiplier for enrollment. We won't be offering any scholarships. Every one of those young ladies that's coming to wrestle is going to be paying their way, and they'll want to do it. And it was interesting to talk to some of the folks, including one of our former wrestlers here at the college and coaches, whose daughter is now an outstanding young wrestler over in Spokane, and she was here at Tri-State, was actually one of the seeded wrestlers at Tri-State at her weight. And he and I talked about how he had been converted and had been opposed to women's wrestling, and now is coaching it and adamantly in support of it. And we have the local young lady, Randalls, he's up at Corley, and his young daughter has done amazing nationally, and there are others, and we've had some in the past, Sarah Foster and others. So it's a tremendous opportunity for these young ladies. It's potentially opening a door beyond just the Juco level to a four-year institution for scholarships, and so I would less like to us to take a hard look at it and encourage us to see what we could do to accommodate these athletes that are working hard and give them a path beyond just the high school level. They currently have their own state tournament. Let's give them a ability to wrestle collegiately here in the state. Keep them here at home, add them to our enrollment. And we'll get the, we'll get the young ladies from Spokane, too, they'll come over, because they have no limited opportunities, and there's quite a group of them over there.
Add women's wrestling, okay, so add that to the list of community helpers. Okay, I, I'm going to restate your motion, just to get us back on discussion, that was quite detailed, thank you. I motion, not I motion, that was yours, but the motion before the board is for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding adding women's wrestling for the 2023 rest season, and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. That's my copy, thank you. That's the motion before. Do anyone else have discussion topics? So this is, again-
Has there been a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, all right, well, under discussion then. Mr. Trustee Banducci, you gave an eloquent plea for this program to be added, and I respect that. And the only thing I'm opposed to is the timing, you know? Well, we're facing a lawsuit by Dr. Swain. While we're facing a lawsuit by Dr. Swain and I would like to, and we just hired another president, and I would like to see a couple more steps towards maintaining our accreditation, you know?
You mean like the category A and B that I've offered for us?
That, but I would like to see some recognition from the Northwest Council or Commission on Colleges and Universities. I'd like to see something from them that says, yeah, you guys are heading in the right direction.
We all hope to see that.
Yeah, and if, you know, at that point.
That's what tonight is hopefully achieving. I looked at all the recommendations.
Hopefully it is. Hopefully it is.
I think tonight, as it's gone, I think we've hit all those.
Hopefully it is and when we get some confirmation of that, I'll be much more likely to support this.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
Trustee Corkel, I respect that opinion, but I think it's, I think it's short-sighted. I think we need to operate as we're going forward with this college. These two things are not linked. They're not mutually exclusive either. So I, I don't understand. These are, these are parallel tracks that have no overlap whatsoever. The continuation and advancement of athletics on this campus has nothing to do with our response to accreditation and the things that we're doing in those activities. And in fact, the athletic department has a very little part in that over here, but yet would be working with this. So while I, I'm not sure I, well, no, I'm not sure I understand the, your expressed opinion and even the caution that you're saying. There's no reason we shouldn't be advancing this college and continuing to try to grow enrollment and provide opportunities for those in the community. So I would suggest that I disagree with your, with what you said, sir, and to do this would be, would be short-sighted and I don't understand why you would do that.
I would just like to say that I appreciate this.
I'm just asking for an evaluation.
I would just say I appreciate the civil disagreement that we're able to, be able to disagree with that. Your response there?
I just, you know, this is my second meeting and I've walked into a hornet's nest here with a lot of things and I'm an old man and I've just, you're right, I'm cautious. I heard the phrase, "Open the budget," you know, and that's, that's why I'm cautious. I want to see a little more time go by. I want to see what happens with Dr. Swain's lawsuit. I want to see the response by January fourth to the NWCCU. Okay? And then I'd be, you know, if this came up, if there was great progress made on all the effort that you've put forth tonight and, and, you know, at our January meeting, we saw some response from them, bingo, we're in. Okay?
Excellent.
Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna take, take the floor if you may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just say that colleges are complex entities and I would say every member on, at this college, including the athletic department, is considered what I consider a teammate in retaining accreditation. And the, this motion that trustee Banducci has put in before us is merely to review, consider, and make a recommendation of the administration department. And if, I only see benefit because they would only make a recommendation. One, they would obviously schedule their priorities on the immediate needs of January fourth response. Two, if they see it as a way to better NIC, then I'm all ears. Three, I'll just stop there. So trustee Wagner, you can keep going.
But the, the question I have again is what is the, to make, what's your attempt, your objective? Is to get to women's wrestling for the end of 2023, right?
The season is starting 2023 through 2024. I believe it's fall.
Fall, okay. So what, what, how long does that take to get ready for that? In other words, is there any cost to waiting on the, for the, on the decision?
Yes. Many details. I'm sure much work needs to happen. That is why the recommendation. I would expect to see those in that of the CEO.
Because that's what I'm hearing trustee Corkel say is why shouldn't we wait? Our plate is full. We have these other things to go on. If, so if there is a cost, then we need to enumerate that as best we know generally. I mean, I assume we do have it in detail, but, and then if, if we're going to cause ourselves problems by waiting, then I think we need to, to be concerned about that. But if we're not, there are other alternatives.
Mr. Chairman, if the motion is simply to have the president.
Review, consider, and make a recommendation.
Review, come back to us with a recommendation.
Absolutely, it's all it is.
I don't see any harm in that, but just so, right here it says add women's wrestling.
Yes, yes.
That's a different thing.
That, well, no, we are on that agenda topic.
It's the agenda topic, but there's a copy of the motion. You'll see my next motion also.
Okay.
That's why I said what you expected is not what you got. All I was asking is for an evaluation of it to see if it's something that we think is wise to do.
And what he said is all we're asking is for an evaluation.
Well, if you could amend, if you could amend the motion to say, and pending approval by the president, the board is willing to open the budget to support the athletic. Pending the recommendation of the president.
The, we are not, we are not necessarily opening the budget. We are basically saying that there's two options. Consider an option with the money, consider adding, review, consider, and make a recommendation with the budget that we've currently allotted for sports.
That's not what it says.
That is not what it says. So what, what we're doing is we're saying, review, consider, and make a recommendation and we are willing to give you more money. We're willing to open the budget if you see it beneficial. That, that extra money would help. So it's just, it's just a willingness to be like, if, if, if they can do it, obviously. If they can do it with their existing funding levels, why would we open the budget then? But if they say, hey, look, to do this, we already have, I think, two wrestling coaches for the men's wrestling team. If we can add one more women's wrestling team and basically have three coaches spread amongst the three of them and, but that means adding one slotted position to the budget, but we would get forty extra students for the wrestling team. So if there's, there, excuse me, community. There is no name-calling necessary. We've had a wonderful meeting. There's no reason to ruin it tonight. We're all tired. I'm getting grumpy. Please, please, let's just finish this tonight. So going back to mine, hold on.
Let me, let me just say, just say one thing, you know, and all due respect to everybody here and I understand trustee Banducci's passion about getting this thing added and I respect that. But at the risk of sounding harsh, I just want to make sure that if we move forward on this, we have a college for them to go to. And I think that we could make that determination if we delayed action on these two items for one month to our January meeting. Because I think you're absolutely right. We had a very productive meeting tonight, took steps in the right direction. Let's get some acknowledgement from the commission that we are headed in the right direction and then, like I said before, I'm all in.
But, Mr. Chair, all we're asking for is analysis and a recommendation and that's it. We're not moving forward with any decision on doing this. It's just saying, would you please look at this and let the board know and give us information? We don't have the information. We need to make a decision. And my concern again is that it takes a long time to work these issues, staff, if you need it, money, all those things. Are we sure we're not eliminating the possibility of doing it by waiting?
Well, that is a great argument.
Let's just, let's just strike these last few words, willing to open the budget to support the athletic improvement. Let's, let's just leave it to make a recommendation regarding adding women's wrestling for the 2023-2024 season.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as a motion to amend. Is there a second on the board?
I'll second it.
I'll second it, okay. I think we've had enough discussion. Let's call for a vote on amending the motion before. All those in favor of amending the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Five, four, three, two. This would be the point where you guys would say nay if you want to keep the motion as is, but. I'm about to have the amending pass.
I'm gonna say nay.
Trustee Wagner, I think you're abstaining.
I think it's six, one half dozen.
I'm abstaining, yeah.
Okay, I'm actually gonna vote nay, so the motions, the amending of the motion fails. The original motion stands as is. I shall rephrase the motion as presented by trustee Banducci. I motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding adding women's wrestling for the 2023 to 2024 season and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. So calling for the question, we're gonna, forgive me. I'm just gonna read out the names of the amending of the motion that failed. We have Corkel and Zimmerman that voted to amend the motion. We have trustee Wagner who abstained and we have trustee Banducci and myself who voted nay to amend the motion. So we're back to the original one as is for the minutes. I hope that helps. And we are going now to vote on the original motion. And I shall state it one more time for clarity. I motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding adding women's wrestling for the 2023-2024 season and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. All those in favor say aye.
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 Trustee Banducci, trustee Wagner, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
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 Trustee Zimmerman, trustee Corkel, say nay. The chair votes aye. The motion passes. Three to two. I hope that identifying for the minutes works. Moving to the next agenda topic. NIC's athletic sports, coaches, hirings, and pay. Trustee Banducci, do you want to introduce your motion? Do you want us to have the floor? You have it.
Yeah, this one's gonna be pretty simple, actually. I motion for the president, in the auspices of, under the topic of coaches, hirings, and pay. I motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding the whole athletic department and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. So I would like, so now I will.
We're looking for a second?
I made my motion. If there's a second, then I'll give you a little more discussion on it.
Anyone seconding it would take it to discussion.
I'll take it second for discussion.
Trustee Wagner, thank you for your second to go into discussion. Okay, we have trustee Banducci proposed the motion, trustee Wagner who's seconded the motion. I shall restate the motion. I motion, trustee Banducci motions for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding the whole athletic department and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. So going to discussion, I would say.
Jerma Kenzie, if I may. My motion.
Trustee Banducci, all you.
I think that the, I think that this motion is a companion motion to the prior one as we evaluate and look at adding women's wrestling, which would then precipitate the hiring of a head coach for that program. I think that would be an appropriate time for our president and our athletic director to take an overarching look at the athletic department and look at the personnel that we have in place as coaches and assistant coaches and at the pay or salaries that they're, that they're receiving and to see if we have adequate coverage with our head coaches and assistant coaches and that there's parity amongst the programs, that they're all equally represented with, with the coaching staff and that the coaching staffs are paid in an equivalent manner and that there's parity across the board and that we have the proper staffing. I have a couple thoughts on that. Or we, I think we could augment where we're at right now, one in particular. For me, it's a, I'll just throw it out there as part of the discussion. It could be part of the review, but I think we have a, a safety issue with wrestling, men's wrestling. If anybody's familiar with wrestling, most coaching staffs have at least three, if not more. High school, I think there's fourteen weights currently, fifteen weights, not as many in college. But normally in the coaches, wrestling's an unusual sport. It's a very hands-on sport for a coach. Coaches get on the mat and they wrestle with their wrestlers. And usually there'll be a lighter weight coach, kind of a medium weight coach, and a heavyweight coach. When I coached at Lake City, I coached from one seventy-nine, one eighty-nine, two fifteen heavyweights because I was the bigger, one of the bigger, bigger coaches. So I worked with our larger weight classes. My son was on the team as a one oh-three and smaller and I never got near him on the mat because he was coached by other coaches that were more his size and his practice partners. So I think there's an issue there. There's a bigger issue though when we're at tournaments and we have multiple mats. I was talking to the coach at Tri-State. He said the other day they had guys on four different mats and one of the coaches was standing between two of the mats, trying to coach two different mats at the same time. We don't have mat coverage with only two coaches. You need three. We had three for years and it wasn't until the prior regime that one of those positions was eliminated. And so for safety.
Please be respectful with regime, prior administration.
Prior administration, excuse me. So you have a lot of, large number of athletes in that room, thirty, forty, fifty. There's been more at times. You have, you need to be able to cover the weights as you're working with the, with the athletes better. And I think it's for safety, both in the room itself and at the tournaments and to have proper coverage as coaches. So I give that as one example of something that could be evaluated and, and maybe people will disagree with my opinion and that's okay. But I think there's a number of things that can be looked at, but overall, right now, might be a good time to take a look at the overall athletic department, see if we're manned and staffed appropriately and if, if, if we're paying appropriately and that everything's looking good or not, and then make adjustments. So again, my simple motion is I motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding the whole athletic department and that the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. And maybe we'll save money, so who knows?
And if I can recall right, trustee Wagner, you were the second to go to discussion on this.
I seconded to go to discussion, yeah.
And is there anyone else who would like to weigh in for an opinion? This is the last agenda night and it's between us and being done.
I would just repeat myself.
I, I think we've been there. Trustee Zimmerman.
Does the scope of the coaches go beyond the wrestling program?
In what, in what, I'm sorry, in what context?
Regarding the whole athletic department.
Oh, would you be the review?
The review and the hiring and the pay.
Oh, yeah, no, it's the whole athletic department, all sports.
The whole athletic department.
All sports.
Because I understand that the golf coach and his assistant are, want, the assistant is not paid. So would this bring some of that to light?
You know, trustee Zimmerman, actually, I would hope so because not only is, is it a volunteer position, which creates some other accountability issues, a paid position versus a volunteer position. There's some legal potential ramifications there. There's a number of things. Even to just, and I'll use these words because people like these, fairness, equity. I think the golf program's being discriminated against. You've got a coach that's being paid a fraction with some of the others. He's not being paid as a full-time position. He's being paid as a half position. But he's coaching both a women's and a men's team. They have fall and spring seasons. He has a volunteer assistant coach. So to me, I think the golf, from a safety and accountability.
Not to delve too close into a personnel matter?
But I think bringing into parity, but here's the other point of that too. You've got a coach without a, without a paid, without a paid assistant coach, you have a single-point failure. If that head coach, something happened, I do not have another paid staff person that's gonna take care of those two teams. So that in itself, we should never have just a single coach for any program. You never want a single-point failure. You know, I mean, things happen in life. So I mean, those are sorts of things that, yeah, could be looked at certainly and reviewed.
I would love to address those issues and I look forward to doing that when we hear back from the accrediting agency and seeing where we are and where we stand as an institution. As I said previously, my, my concern is that there won't be a college for the athletes to attend. So it's, I would, I would vote to wait.
Well, we all hope that's not the case. So thank you. Let's call for the question. Unless trustee Wagner, you want to close this out for discussion?
Again, the issue of timing is there, what's the cost of waiting for a month to make this decision?
If, if I may, Chair?
Trustee Banducci.
Again, I think this motion works well in tandem with the motion that I made just previously that we've approved and that as we're looking at the potential, reviewing the potential of adding a sport, it's the logical time to review the athletic department as a whole. I think those are two things that make sense to be done in tandem.
So, if I may.
Trustee Wagner, please.
So I, if, so the question is what, in terms of the resources applied to do this analysis and make a recommendation? to do this analysis and make a recommendation, what it would, does it have any conflict that you can see with the accreditation issues?
None that I'm aware of.
I, I would think that the president would be able to, A, delegate, B, schedule timing and priorities properly as a very qualified and talented individual, regardless of who that person is. So, yes, when it comes to priorities, obviously retaining accreditation is the number one institutional priority. And that is what, uh, this administration and this board is focused on, and I believe that we've achieved tonight. And also, um, it's like a to-do list of, added, added to the to-do list of many things to do, and many things to continually improve for the betterment of NIC, for the betterment of the students, and to the betterment of, to those who work here, to be honest. Not, not to delve into a personnel issue, but when, um, prior board conversations, certain details came about, uh, it sounded, it sounded like it absolutely needed to be looked at, and to my understanding that it either, uh, anyway, so, I, I think, I think this is, I think this is appropriate, and I'll happily go on record to do that. And again, we are merely, um, motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding the whole athletic department, and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. So, in the interest of going to bed tonight, I'm gonna call for the question. Unless trustee Wagner, you have anything else you want to say?
The, uh, I was thinking of it in terms of the women's wrestling, but there's also the issue of, excuse me, of paying the coaches appropriately now.
Well, if, also, I'd say, if, if, I kind of view it as if we're going back to the NJCAA conference change. It, it would be probably timely to do it tonight, um, or not, not do it tonight, but like have the same review, consider, and recommendation to assess if the conference change were to happen at the president's recommendation, that what would it take to make that happen? Including increased salaries for more responsibilities, or adding positions for, for wrestling, or, um, so, it is.
What you're saying is the decision-making process is for these steps are related.
Yes, and we're, we're giving the institution options, and we're trying to work collaboratively as a board to say, tell us what you need, and as a board, we will get whatever this college needs to succeed. That's how I interpret these motions.
And, and I, I think what I heard was the sports aren't just sports. They affect enrollment, and the effect of the sports programs runs throughout the whole college.
Y- yeah, and, uh, athletic participation is, draws people who don't necessarily would come for o- other reasons, and it, it is a proven to be a student FTE driver, which is a full-time equivalent driver. And, and it is a, a tool in the tool belt. Trustee Banducci?
Two quick thoughts. This, I'm not trying to say that we're gonna have the same impact or effect just because of the potential change in, in conferences or anything, or even maybe adding the women's wrestling if that happens. But you look at Gonzaga, they were a small Jesuit school that was struggling until all of a sudden their basketball team exploded. Now they're building and spending, and they got more money than they know what to do with, and they're on TV all the time, national coverage. And that's an example, but how many people knew about Gonzaga until their basketball team was successful? How many colleges are known because of their athletic programs? I don't want to offend anybody, but not many colleges are known because their outstanding English department or whatever. So, the, the athletics is the front door for PR for colleges. I mean, I know colleges because I've, I've seen them in sports, football, basketball.
If I may respond.
Highlights on ESPN or their, their names, so.
The contrast that I've.
So that's why I wanted sports evaluated, because I think it has a real value, and I think it does help drive enrollment. And it's a real PR tool, and it gives us more exposure.
Not, not to sell this to you, trustee Wagner, but sports, with the actions we've, I think this, this motion is, is appropriate in, in the context of the actions that we did tonight. And, and just to, not to go back to the action discussion item of the conference changing, um, agenda topic, but bringing the community, getting the community on campus is, is a wonderful tool to get people comfortable with our buildings, get us comfortable with our people, to get us comfortable with the idea of coming to North Idaho College for a junior college opportunity. And, um, sports is, is one of those. People grow up in, in the gym watching those games. And if you look at the crowd participation between, um, in, in a, NWA, uh, conference game respectfully, and maybe go back eight years ago to what it was at the time, you'll, you'll notice, at least as it's been conveyed to me, that the crowd participation, that, that the crowd attendance is, size is quite different. And anything to bring the community on campus to discover how wonderful the North Idaho College campus is, I convey that as, as a win. And whether it be Schuler Hall performances, in the gym performances, on the field performances, or, or in the classroom performances, or in the nursing, there's so many, so many opportunities to get this college firing on all cylinders, if you may. And so that, that's what this motion is trying to do, is, uh, bring attention to one part of this machine and have it reviewed, consider, and make a recommendation. So, calling for the question, in interest of going to bed, uh, let's take a vote. Trustee Zimmerman?
Nay.
Nay. Trustee Corkell?
Nay.
Uh, trustee Wagner? Community, we've had a wonderful night tonight. Please be respectful on your way out. This will be our last vote before we adjourn. And, uh, let's demonstrate the love in our community tonight, right now. We've, we've, we've done fine. We've done fine. So, trustee Banducci, will you vote for, um, just yourself? How do you vote? I think this is your motion. I'm gonna assume you're gonna say aye.
I will say aye.
So currently, we have a two, um, we have a, uh, all right, an aye, a two to the nay, uh, one to the aye of, uh, trustee Banducci. I'm gonna vote aye in support of this motion to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding the whole athletic department, and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. Trustee Wagner, all eyes on you.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the workload, but I'm also concerned about people being treated fairly. We've discussed that at previous meetings. This is my, like, 15th board meeting I've attended or been a trustee. And, uh.
I can make a deal with you. If you vote nay, we can amend this motion, make it the lowest priority of all the things.
That I would be happy with, because I'm concerned about the conflict with the other activities.
Vote your nay, sir.
Nay.
Nay, the motion fails. We shall attempt another motion to go back to a friendly motion, shall we? So, trustee Banducci, that is not going to bed quite yet. I'm gonna make another motion to hopefully satisfy trustee Wagner's legitimate concerns. And I'm gonna amend the motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding the whole athletic department, and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. And this request, um, shall not interfere with the accreditation response and shall be only viewed as a tool to better the institution at, as a low priority request. Satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, I think we can get somewhere. To support an athletic improvement, and this request shall not, uh, interfere with the accreditation re, response and shall be viewed as a low priority request. Overall, done? Happy? Okay, the motion that I shall make. I motion for the president to review, consider, and make a recommendation regarding the whole athletic department, and the board is willing to open the budget to support an athletic improvement. And this request shall not interfere with the accreditation response and shall be viewed as a low priority request. May I have a second? We're looking for consensus, but.
I'll second it.
Thank you, trustee Zimmerman. Okay, um, I think we've labored this point to enough. I'm gonna call the question unless anyone wants to weigh in more. Trustee Zimmerman, what is your vote?
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. Trustee Corkell? Trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Banducci?
Aye.
Trust, I'm speechless. Trustee McKenzie votes aye. We have unanimous consent. We are working towards consensus. Team, thank you. Crowd, thank you. NIC team members, thank you. Accreditation agency, thank you. We are working to address your concerns. We value your input, your December 17th letter, and we look forward to responding back to you. This meeting is adjourned.